Good evening again, everybody. It is 7:06 PM. We are coming back from our closed session. If Ms. Cavalero can re-establish our quorum. Yes, President Householder?
I'm here.
Vice President Lewis?
Present.
Trustee Hack?
I'm here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from August 25th, 2021 passes 5-0.
Wonderful. Next up, we have our Special Board of Education meeting minutes from September 2nd. Is there a motion on this?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Dr. Lewis, seconded by Trustee Hernandez. May we please have a roll call?
Yes, Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from September 2nd, 2021 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, item F. We have our Regular Board of Education minutes from September 8th. Is there a motion on this item?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Rocha. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. May we please have a roll call vote?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from September 2nd, 2021 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, item F. We have our Regular Board of Education minutes from September 8th. Is there a motion on this item?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Rocha. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. May we please have a roll call vote?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from September 2nd, 2021 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, item F. We have our Regular Board of Education minutes from September 8th. Is there a motion on this item?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Rocha. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. May we please have a roll call vote?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from August 25th, 2021 passes 5-0.
Wonderful. Next up, we have our Special Board of Education meeting minutes from September 2nd. Is there a motion on this?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Dr. Lewis, seconded by Trustee Dr. Lewis. May we please have a roll call?
Yes, Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from September 2nd, 2021 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, item F. We have our Regular Board of Education minutes from September 8th. Is there a motion on this item?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Rocha. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. May we please have a roll call vote?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from September 2nd, 2021 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, item F. We have our Regular Board of Education minutes from September 8th. Is there a motion on this item?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Rocha. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. May we please have a roll call?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from September 2nd, 2021 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, item F. We have our Regular Board of Education minutes from September 8th. Is there a motion on this?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Rocha. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. May we please have a roll call?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from September 2nd, 2021 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, item F. We have our Regular Board of Education minutes from September 8th. Is there a motion on this?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Rocha. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. May we please have a roll call?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from September 2nd, 2021 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, item F. We have our Regular Board of Education minutes from September 8th. Is there a motion on this?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Rocha. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. May we please have a roll call?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from September 2nd, 2021 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, item F. We have our Regular Board of Education minutes from September 8th. Is there a motion on this?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Rocha. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. May we please have a roll call?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from September 2nd, 2021 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, item F. We have our Regular Board of Education minutes from September 8th. Is there a motion on this?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Rocha. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. May we please have a roll call?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from September 2nd, 2021 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, item F. We have our Regular Board of Education minutes from September 8th. Is there a motion on this?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Rocha. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. May we please have a roll call?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from September 2nd, 2021 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, item F. We have our Regular Board of Education minutes from September 8th. Is there a motion on this?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Rocha. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. May we please have a roll call?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Trustee, or Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from August 25th, 2021 passes 5-0.
Wonderful. Next up, we have our Special Board of Education meeting minutes from September 2nd. Is there a motion on this?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Dr. Lewis, seconded by Trustee Dr. Lewis. May we please have a roll call?
Yes, Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from September 2nd, 2021 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, item F. We have our Regular Board of Education minutes from September 8th. Is there a motion on this item?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Rocha. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. May we please have a roll call vote?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from September 9th, 2021 passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, we have Superintendent Reports. I'll pass it over to Superintendent Anello.
Good evening. So I just want to give a quick update. As you know, we partnered with Kaiser Permanente, who was very impacted once vaccines became available for children five and up. So we partnered with them and held vaccination clinics for anyone in Antioch and even communities beyond if they were interested, who wanted to be vaccinated. And that was in the last week of November, first weeks of December. And we gave a total of first doses, we were able to administer 784. Second dose, 331. Boosters, nearly 500. Flu shots, which I was pleased to see also, 230, for a total of 1,841. So I just want to thank Kaiser Permanente for partnering with us and for, I know, our Director, Ms. Wisely, in the audience did a great job being the liaison and organizing all of that. So a big thank you to her. Let's all embarrass her. And then I brought this evening, I have it somewhere here. You may be aware that City Manager Ron Bernal is retiring after decades of service. And so I prepared a certificate and I'm hoping the rest of the board will join me in signing that. And if someone's going to his retirement party tomorrow night, great. If you could take that, President Householder, that'd be wonderful. And finally, I just want to wish everyone a wonderful, restful, and safe holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. And then also just to our sound people, I don't know if this is just me, but I'm hearing feedback from either this or this. And then also, it's a little bit quiet. So I don't know if we can do anything about that, but it's wildly distracting me right now. All right, next up, we have our school reports and we have a representative here this evening for Marsh Elementary School. So I don't know if Superintendent Anello was gonna introduce at all?
Yes, we have Principal Blair Wilkins. Wilkins and his team will report to us on Marsh Elementary School. Welcome.
Good evening, Superintendent Anello, Cabinet, and the Board of Education. My name is Blair Wilkins. I'm the Principal of Marsh Elementary. And I brought with me a handful of our all-star cast that make up a great team at Marsh Elementary. I first have Ms. Dana Gaspard, who's our Vice Principal. I have our non-prep intervention-
Good evening again, everybody. It is 7:06 PM. We are coming back from our closed session. If Ms. Cavalero can reestablish our quorum.
Yes, President Householder.
I'm here.
Vice President Lewis.
Present.
Trustee Hack.
I'm here.
Trustee Hernandez.
Here.
Trustee Rocha.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And I'm hearing a little bit of feedback right here, but I'm going to actually pass it over to our Deputy Superintendent Romeo for quick.
Yes, this evening, we're going to pull item 18C. Unfortunately, our presenter was unable to be here this evening, so that item will be brought forward.
Can't hear you. No, we can't. I'm sorry. Is that better?
This evening, I'm going to pull item 18C. Our presenter is unable to be here this evening, so this item will be brought back in January.
18B.
18C, which is proposed survey for possible future bond measures. There was no action. It was just going to be a presentation. So, thank you for that, Ms. Romeo. So, moving on, there is no report. There was no action taken in closed session, so nothing to report. Next, we're going to move on to our flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next, three items are our minutes. So first, item D, our minutes for our meeting from August 25th. So is there a motion on this?
I move approval.
Motion made by Trustee Rocha, seconded by Trustee Dr. Lewis. Roll call.
Trustee Hack.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
President Householder.
Yes.
Trustee, or Vice President Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Rocha.
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from August 25th, 2021, passes 5-0.
Wonderful. Next up, we have our Special Board of Education meeting minutes from September 2nd. Is there a motion on this?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Dr. Lewis, seconded by Trustee Hernandez. May we please have a roll call?
Yes, Trustee Hack.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
President Householder.
Yes.
Vice President Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Rocha.
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from September 2nd, 2021, passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, item F, we have our Regular Board of Education minutes from September 8th. Is there a motion on this item?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Rocha. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. May we please have a roll call vote?
Trustee Hack.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
President Householder.
Yes.
Vice President Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Rocha.
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes from September 9th, 2021, passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next up, we have Superintendent Reports. I'll pass it over to Superintendent Anello.
Yes. Good evening. So I just want to give a quick update. As you know, we partnered with Kaiser Permanente, who was very impacted once vaccines became available for children five and up. So we partnered with them and held vaccination clinics for anyone in Antioch and even communities beyond, if they were interested, who wanted to be vaccinated. And that was in the last week of November, first weeks of December. And we gave a total of first doses. We were able to administer 784. Second dose, 331. Boosters, nearly 500. Flu shots, which I was pleased to see also, 230, for a total of 1,841. So I just want to thank Kaiser Permanente for partnering with us and for, I know, our Director, Ms. Wisely's in the audience, did a great job being the liaison and organizing all of that. So, a big thank you to her. Let's all embarrass her. And then, I brought this evening, I have it somewhere here. You may be aware that City Manager Ron Bernal is retiring after decades of service. And so I prepared a certificate, and I'm hoping the rest of the board will join me in signing that. And if someone's going to his retirement party tomorrow night, great. If you could take that, President Householder, that'd be wonderful. And finally, I just want to wish everyone a wonderful, restful, and safe holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, also, just to our sound people. I don't know if this is just me, but I'm hearing feedback from either this or this. And then also, it's a little bit quiet. So, I don't know if we can do anything about that, but wildly distracting me right now. All right. Next up, we have our school reports, and we have a representative here this evening for Marsh Elementary School. So, I don't know if Superintendent Anello was going to introduce at all.
Yes, we have Principal Blair Wilkins. Wilkins and his team will report to us on Marsh Elementary School. Welcome.
Good evening, Superintendent Anello, Cabinet, and the Board of Education. My name is Blair Wilkins. I'm the Principal of Marsh Elementary, and I brought with me a handful of our all-star cast that make up a great team at Marsh Elementary. I first have Ms. Dana Gaspard, who's our Vice Principal. I have our non-prep intervention teacher, Ms. Melissa Gerdo. I have our school counselor, Ms. Kathy Calhoun. And I have one of our PE teachers and also our PBIS Coordinator, Ms. Amanda Gallagher. So, preparing for our, preparing for this school year began at the end of the 2018-19 school year, which was at the beginning of March. We noticed that, you know, as COVID was starting to spread and parents had a major concern about keeping their kids safe. They wanted to know what we were doing. So we immediately began bringing students outdoors for our eating, except we didn't have really a cafeteria outside our tables, so we made it picnic-style. So we made the best of a really interesting situation. We noticed that during that time, our students were really enjoying being outside. We noticed that we had less incidents that we had to respond to and that students were engaging in more positive manners rather than yelling and screaming in the cafeteria. So that began with some great dialogue on what can we do differently during our cafeteria time and what can we do differently when we begin to return. So I reached out to Maintenance and Operation to discuss how I can begin planning and budgeting. And along with Jessica Romeo and Andy Cannon and Jeff Collins, we developed a plan in which we can start looking at how we can spend some money to develop an outdoor cafeteria. So as you can see with the pictures in the slide, our students now, they enjoy the beautiful view of Mount Diablo every single day, unless it's one of our rainy or windy or smoke days in which, you know, we're not able to be outside. But so far, we've been able to eat outside over 80% of the school year. So it's been really nice. So, that also allows me to keep personnel outside as well, so I'm not splitting my student monitors between being inside or outside. I have everyone outside on those days. So it's made for a great transition, and kids really enjoy being outside. So to prepare for this year, we looked at creating a student survey, a parent survey, I should say, in which we wanted to solicit feedback on what parents would like to see when we return. So we administered a survey at the end of the school year. We had over 200 parents take the survey and give us really good data to begin planning our SIPSA. And so I was able to allocate funds according to what some of our parent, actually, the majority of what our parent concerns were, which were social, emotional, and academic learning.
Good evening. To support the parent request and our student needs for academic intervention, based on data, we decided to have a small group pull-out sessions with an intervention team. What's wonderful is that we're able to pull those small groups from individual classrooms, which meant we didn't have to combine children from different classrooms and actually avoiding a potential outbreak at the same time. And usually, the rounds last between six to eight weeks. And with those same students are pulled out two to three times a week. Well, two times per week for English and one time a week for Math. And the person who has organized this wonderful program is right here next to me. Ms. Corot.
Hi, everyone. So, I'm Melissa Valdivia-Gurdo. I work with two other fabulous retired teachers from AUSD, Karen Anderson and Patty Gates. And as you can see on our emojis back there. What we have done is, at the beginning of the school year, we identified kids by actually doing one-on-one assessments with all the students from first through fifth grade, because we really wanted to have real good, clear data on where their reading gaps were. And once we were done assessing one-on-one, we ended up sitting with our teachers, and we did one-on-one chats with each teacher just to not only inform them of where their kids were at, starting of the school year, but also to sit with them and say, which kids would be most in need of seeing us for that small group intervention? And so, once we were done with data chats, collectively, we made a decision of which kids we would be seen for the six to nine weeks. After that, for students that were in first through third, they got to, we pulled out just four from each classroom. And for the upper-grade kids, we actually pulled out eight. And that's because I have like, I have an actual classroom, so I'm able to fit more kids. And so, I, like, for example, I see the fourth and fifth graders, and so I do two times a week reading, and then I do once a week, we meet for math. And these are kids that were, again, we monitored, we looked at their data, and collectively, with the classroom teacher and myself, were able to make the decision. For the younger ones, we do see them twice a week as well, the first through third, but we see them for about 30 minutes. But for the upper grades, we do a 45-minute session, because they can, you know, stay engaged longer. And after, which we just wrapped our last week, last week, we started testing those kids that we were seeing for six to nine weeks to see, was their growth and if they need to see us for another session. And I'm now compiling, because I've collected the data, and it looks very promising, because we're able to work more with the teacher, with the classroom teacher, because it's their kids when we pull out that session. And that's, I think, been more impactful. So, yes, that's where we're at right now. So let's see what that data looks like. And we're going to start back next session, once we come back from break.
Good evening. One of the needs that, in talking with Blair over the summer and everything coming off-distance learning, was making sure our students had a sense of belonging. And in order to do that with the positive behavior, we really wanted to hammer home the three pillars that are at Marsh, being respectful, responsible, and ready to learn. So with that, sorry. We created an incentive system where all staff around the school could give acknowledgement to students' positive behavior. And then we started doing a weekly raffle. And with that raffle, we were able to start sending home weekly certificates. So even if a student didn't win in the raffle, they were still able to take something tangible home to show their families. And with that data, we were able to give it to staff. Thank you. And show teachers who they had given, we call them pride paws, pride paws to, and who they had not, so that maybe they could reflect a little bit about who they were seeing in the room and who they weren't. Moving forward in the spring, we want to work to acknowledge staff the way we're acknowledging the students, kind of do a raffle for staff to make it more fun for them, to be more participatory. And we're boosting our signage in the hallways and community spaces. And I hope to solicit family feedback to understand how they're receiving those certificates when they go home. And lastly, we've started rolling out a digital option for teachers and staff, so it's a bit more, I guess, easy access-wise to like, quickly give those to students. So I'm hoping to implement more of an efficient way to gather that, maybe using LiveSchool. I don't know if anyone's familiar with that software, but it allows to have a store and a monetary value to prizes, and students can get paychecks. It's very cool. But hopefully, we'll see. But other than that, it's been going really well. And we have seen a shift in student, sorry, student behavior. So, thank you.
All right. So, in so many staff meetings that we had, everybody was really concerned about the social-emotional wellness. Especially as staff, you know, we've also concerned about our social-emotional wellness as well, you know. So, it was very important that we had a lot of supports on campus. We have been so blessed this year, of course, to have Second Step as our school-wide campus initiative. It allows us to have a common language. It allows the kids to, you know, maybe have Second Step during kindergarten, but also go to first grade and continue to hear these social-emotional strategies for self-regulation. Of course, we have an awesome wellness room that has LED lights and a lot of plush, like, you know, bean bags and places for kids to relax in. In the photo, I had meditation music on and the aromatherapy, and the boys just like, they just chilled for like, five or 10 minutes. And they were, they were actually sent to go sit down for a minute because of their behavior on, but I was like, no, you need to come in here. Let's refocus. So after they laid down and relaxed, they loved the music, and we had a chance to talk once again about what happened, what they could do better. So the Wellness Room is one of our amazing opportunities for kids at school to come back for 10 to 15 minutes, self-regulate, and back, you know, get back to be ready to learn. We are so excited to have Mindful Life Project on campus. They really focus on mindful meditation, yoga practices. We use it a lot for our students who are like, a little anxious before campus. We have a lot of kinders and first graders that have never been on campus at all. So, having the opportunity for them to just, you know, have a place or have another adult that they can talk to about, you know, relaxing and getting focused on school is so important. We have Family Purpose. Ms. Mary Ann is with, is one of our amazing Family Purpose facilitators. She helps us with a lot of restorative justice conflicts on campus. As you know, tetherball's a big issue. It'll cause a straight fight, you know. So we have, you know, but at the end of the day, we bring the kids together, and we try to mediate the conflict so they can manage their emotions and put, you know, voices to their words and feelings. It's very productive. We are so blessed to have Mr. DJ. He's from the Hero Program. He really focuses on our recess time. So our recess time has been structured, but it's only one grade. And during that time, you know, he'll have like, a structured activity. It'll be like kickball, or it'll be, you know, the parachute or some type of activity where kids are not just wandering around the campus. Like I said, sometimes it's been rainy, it's been cold. Tetherball's an option. There's some balls, but at least, you know, kids can do other activities. We have a huge Connect Four out there. There's like, tons of things for them to do. So, those are part of our programs. And all three of those programs are used on one-on-one basis. Like, if kids don't know how to play basketball very well, we can put them with Mr. DJ to help them, once again, work on sportsmanship, listening, you know, following directions. Family Purpose, like I said, is great to pull out one-on-one or help with crises around campus. And Mindful Life Program, again, they also have small group and large group opportunities for kids. Our after-school programs are amazing. We as well did a survey from our kids, and they told us what they wanted to do. A lot of them, we had run club on our campus before. So we have tons of kids. I needed run club for myself, just to run a mile once a week, you know, and stretch and jog. And the kids, my motivation, they're motivated to get out there with staff and just run around, so we do like, a mile, we do our stretches. At the same time, we have sports and games with Mr. DJ. He does like, a structured game with different grade levels, you know. So that's still going on. And we have a social media news club that we started with our kids to kind of give voice to the students. They've been doing articles. The one behind you is about a young lady. I believe it's the one that she was talking about, the Day of the Dead. And she was giving, that was our friend. I think it's a picture of her, our friend at school, and she was, you know, giving us more background information as to where it came from. So we were super excited about that. We also have, what else we got, Mr. Wilkins? Oh, multicultural club on Fridays. There's another slider missing. It's okay. Multicultural Club on Fridays has given us an opportunity to explore different cultures on campus, but also, you know, give kids a smaller, it's a smaller group. So we have, Mr. Gerdo's been helping us with that. She's given us passports. We talk about different cultures around the world. And we also have our awesome art club that we've been doing as well. And Mindful Life has gifted us with a Monday and Thursday after-school group as well. So we have a lot going on after school. Our parents have been so supportive. We have had no behavioral issues at all. You know, the kids are excited to be there. And it's really important just to get the kids grounded and focus on how exciting it can be, again, to be at school. And I think that we're doing pretty good.
And today, I pulled the data to see how all these are, you know, all these initiatives are impacting our students. And I'm proud to report that we have reduced the amount of students pre-pandemic. The school year 2018-19 to this year was a 66% reduction in the number of students who have received a suspension day, which led to 57% less overall days of suspension. So all these programs do make a difference. Thank you.
Well, this was a really great presentation. If you guys can hold on just a quick second. I don't know if any of my colleagues have any questions or comments. This was a very thorough presentation. So, I don't have any questions, just to say that, you know, this was fantastic. I really appreciate as well, just even the presentation itself shows me the care that you all take, because this is great for vision impaired folks to have the darker background. And so, even that in and of itself shows the care that you all put into your school and the way that you present yourself. So I appreciate that very much. And so, Trustee Dr. Lewis.
Yeah, so thank you for that presentation. It was very, very thorough, as President Householder just suggested. I did have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Oh, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So, I did have a couple of questions. So you mentioned, it seemed like parent involvement is, I'm sorry, student involvement is big, and, you know, you've been successful there. I guess my first question would be, on the PBIS, like, one of the things that sort of popped up in my head was, are parents involved in this, in this, what was it? The positive reinforcement? So for example, you mentioned that students are given power paws? Pride paws? And then they will receive a certificate? Is there any parent engagement on the other end of that?
So, I'm connected to multiple families through social media, because they're my former students who now have kids who attend Marsh. And I've seen pictures where they're taking with their kids, showing off how proud they are of their kids and why they received their certificate. So it's been really cool to see some of my students grow from being, you know, in my classroom to now being parents of children at Marsh and how I'm able to serve them at a different level now. So, I have seen positive engagement from that.
You must have started teaching when you were 12. You know, so, you know, I think that it's important that we share that. I mean, within reason. Obviously, we don't want to show the kiddos faces and things like that, but to the degree possible, you know, we want to get that information out. Because again, if this is working, maybe we can duplicate this in other arenas. And then I get, I had, for the Wellness Room, the Supporting SEL, what period do the Wellness Rooms happen? Is it sort of fluid throughout the day? Like, what does that look like?
So, that's a little interesting. You know, we introduced the Wellness Room to our campuses, and my office is in the Wellness Room, so I am there. I am not always able to access it. We do have Family Purpose and other social-emotional supports on campus, like, our name's Mary Ann, DJ. They are always welcome to come in and be that person. We're struggling, to be honest, with having that one person there the whole time, to have it accessible for what it's really used for, right? Like, to give a pass, to come in for 10 to 15 minutes, to have somebody who's knowledgeable in social-emotional, you know, needs. So, that's been a bit of a struggle. If I need to, most of the teachers have my cellphone, or they can call the office. If I'm not there, Mr. Wilkins will gladly open the door, you know. So we do have staff on campus that will rotate to support that, you know. So, it's not as accessible as like, these amazing passes that we had printed off. That'd be awesome, like, okay, I'm noticing that this kid is, you know. And so, to be honest, it's the struggle that we're having. At least for me, I will speak for myself. But in our elementary conversations as counselors, we're kind of like, you know, who is that one person? And that one person, whoever's in there, really has to be effective for our kids, as well as the teachers in recognizing that this kid is, this kid needs a few minutes, you know. And we also want to teach the students to advocate for themselves, you know. So it's kind of, you know, a bit of a struggle. But the Wellness Room and all the tools are welcome, you know, for all the staff to use, for sure.
Yeah. And I think the question behind my question is like, so for example, you know, I've worked in Wellness Rooms before, completely effective. I think the challenge that I had, that I experienced when I worked in those Wellness Rooms was, you know, we have this kiddo, we get them sort of centered.
Yeah.
How do you then redirect them back to class to get them engaged in the class?
That transition is another, such an important piece, you know, because it's not like, okay, you're fine, see you later, and just send the kid down the hallway. You know what I'm saying? It needs to be, that process is still kind of, I think, needs to be crafted. And having the teacher who's teaching a lesson to be able to say, okay, transitioning the student back in properly as well. So, I am still trying to figure out that answer, because all of our staff members are so different, right? Like, some of them react or recognize child's emotions and conflicts at different levels. So it's kind of a, it's a show, you know what I'm saying? It's kind of a gamble every day. But it's definitely, definitely, most of the time, I'm walking a kid back and making sure they're sitting down. Or another staff member is transitioning them back, you know. Because the Wellness Room is not, it's not a, it's not a place for like, a half an hour kind of situation. We're really trying to get kids to self-regulate and go back to class. So we're still trying to perfect that transition period.
And then, last question.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Lewis. If I could interject on the eve, this evening on the board's agenda is a job description for a Wellness Room Coordinator for all 24 of the sites. So, that is going to, is coming forward.
Nice, we're so excited about that.
And then, last question. So on the after-schools and programming, if I understood correctly, there was a survey done to see what the kiddos would be interested in and what activities? How is that information now being? How is that information now being used? Now that it's been collected, how is that being used?
So originally, the survey was done by our Hero Program. They had like fourth or fifth grade students that stood out as leaders. The teachers, they were recommended by their teachers. They went out around campus and they had taken these surveys from kids and gotten that information. We're kind of assessing like the attendance piece on that as well, like what clubs were most attended, like they wanted these clubs. Run club is awesome. Sports and games, they want to be active. Art club is always has like, when am I getting an art club? Like I can only hold so many kids, right? During different sessions. And some of the other groups like, like multicultural club has been a hit. You know, social media news, I think we took it on, but it was a little bigger than what we thought because the kids really, they really wanted to do like video and other things. So we're still expanding that. So we are still using that information and their interest. The difficult thing in elementary is you got a first grader and you got a fifth grader, you know? So you kind of have, have to alter your groups, even art club at a different medium that you could for fourth or fifth grader. So we're still kind of like seeing how that kind of works on together. So we're kind of, this is like our trial run. So far, super successful, you know? We also have two teachers on campus and our hero coach that are dancers. So we're kind of trying to introduce a dance club as well. There's a lot of TikTokers around, you know? So we got a lot of interest in that, you know? And we'd love to maybe host a talent show or something later on, you know? So we're, we're still listening to the kid voice and still trying to factor in the, the age differences with the, with the kiddos.
Well, let us know if there's opportunities to come in, in support.
Awesome.
Gladly be there.
Yeah, thank you.
That's my last question. Thanks.
And then I'll just go down the line. Trustee Rocha, questions, comments?
You know, I was excited with, well, I've seen it because I'm close by to Marsh, but I like to see the students out eating their lunch. And that's a great idea because that's fresh air and I can see where it would have cut some of the issues that you were having. And it's a great model. So hopefully the weather, it's in your favor to continue it because when you're crowded in one room, sure, there's conflicts going on, just going by and touching somebody by accident. So I'm happy to hear that. There was one thing, item here is a test for growth. I, I didn't quite understand. Did you have a test for growth and, or are you aware of what the growth was or are you waiting for next year?
Which part for the growth?
Test for growth.
Oh, is that for intervention?
I guess it was on the third page.
So that would be?
Intervention, yes.
Yeah, so that would be analyzing data to see how our students grew, to see, you know, do we need to bring a student out of the program and bring a new student into the program? Or do we need to provide additional interventions for the student because we didn't see growth during the six to eight weeks that they were in intervention?
Okay, I understand now. Thank you.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, I definitely really appreciate this presentation and I'm very appreciative of some of those data points that you shared at the end. I think it's a great way to measure success. I, I loved hearing about the data chats. I'd love to hear just a little bit more about maybe when that program started and maybe, you know, some thoughts on how effective that's been and if there's any plans to expand that or other areas where, where we see data used in the school system at your site.
So, you know, the data is what drives, you know, how we're going to serve the students. And we, we certainly have our teacher input. So our teachers are helping us provide, you know, who they think needs to be best served and that's around data that they see in the classroom. But as far as this, we just finished our first group. So we will be, you know, meeting with teachers to see what kids are going to be exiting and what kids will be, you know, remaining in the program. And really our goal is to, to be able to have parent, these parent conferences where we can demonstrate that their student has made, you know, significant academic growth. So we can start having our students showcase, you know, some of the things that they've learned over the course of the year.
Awesome. That's super cool. Thanks for the presentation again.
And then trustee Hack, questions or comments?
Going in a different direction. I drive by Marsh almost every day, yeah, just going down the river or whatever. And I have stopped by, parked my truck and talked to the crossing guards there. You have two, right?
Yeah.
And I've introduced myself to them and we've talked and parents come with their kids and whatever. And I ask them, so how's it going? They love it. The parents are saying very positive things. The kids are excited. Crossing guards, guards are doing their job, but it's kind of neat. That, that's just sort of a, not the details of the program, but just to see the atmosphere. And the parents who I talk to or the cross guards, when they talk to me, they're saying, hey, things are going good at Marsh. I think that's a good word. They're going good.
We, we have between six and eight staff members every morning who open doors for kids, greet kids, give high fives. It really sets a positive tone in the morning and it, it's, you know, we want to show our community that we care and we're there for them. And it really has also helped with the traffic that backs up onto G Street because we have a parking lot that was built for 1948. There was no growth in that, in that parking lot and we're trying to make the best of that situation. And we have really significantly reduced the amount of traffic just by being out there, being present and directing traffic.
And I see those people there every day doing, doing what they're, they're doing, but the traffic's going fine. Their parents are walking their kids across the street. They're happy with Marsh.
Awesome. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. We really appreciate your time and everybody coming out here.
Thank you guys.
All right. Next up, we are going to be moving on to our public comment section for items, general items not on the agenda. So first up, section A is comments from the public and I have Beatrice Hernandez.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to start off with a quick clarification for my name, starting off. My name is Beatrice Hernandez. The pronunciation is very important to me. So Beatrice Hernandez, I will be making another comment tonight. That's why you thought I'd say. So when people criticize board members, one of the things people often say is, hey, how about you step into our schools and then you'll see what it's like? So it's as if many of our board members have not attended or taught at our schools and have not seen, heard and experienced needing the things students need today. On top of there being a global pandemic happening, this assertion that being physically present in schools is the, that is the only way that board members and the community members can participate is incredibly privileged and reductive way to tackle this conversation. So almost anyone who has ever been present in a classroom when a person in a position of authority is set to visit a school knows how much of a misrepresentation this is of the way that schools look from day to day. Though we are still months away from it, as we near to the start of another election year, I hope that we are able to be inviting to all voices who are willing to participate, even if the circumstances of their lives means they can't always be physically present in the schools. The job of the school board is to execute the needs of the students first and foremost, and that's what I look at you all to do. So thank you.
Next up, we have Velma Wilson.
Good evening, AUSD School Board Trustees, our illustrious superintendent, her deputy superintendent and associate superintendent. James Ballsman once said, "The moment we break faith with one another, the sea engulfs and the light goes out." I want to personally invite you all, this is my second time or no, not my third time, inviting you all to attend a virtual opportunity to celebrate Kwanzaa, our African-American students and families. The BSU is live, it's functioning, it's well. Some of you have sat on this board and have mentioned that this district is not concerned about our Black and Brown students. And so I challenge you again, this is your opportunity to show those Black and Brown students that you do care and you're just not saying it. Show up tomorrow. They will be demonstrating the principles of Kwanzaa. This presentation will go through what Kwanzaa is, why it started, and the principles of what makes Kwanzaa. Also, coming up is the 2022 Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration. This is a celebration honoring, honoring the life and the legacy of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. This year's theme is Salute to Greatness, A Dream Not Realized, hashtag Hope and Perseverance. The last day to submit scholarship applications, whether you are submitting an art or an essay or even a video presentation is tomorrow. This information has been disseminated throughout all schools. All students are recognized. They are actively asked to please submit from the elementary, middle and high school. Thank you to trustee Dr. Lewis for stepping up and awarding also an additional scholarship that will be, he will get to actually choose himself. Yes, you will do that this year. And this is his second year pouring into the students out of his personal pocket to help support these efforts. So thank you. I would be remiss if I did not say this. Thank you to trustee Rocha. I know that I can always count on you and I know that when you come, you are coming authentically from your heart. Thank you for being there and being a shoulder that I could lean on during today's activities. I will go further into that later as the agenda because Velma Wilson is on the agenda and I will discuss that. But one of the things that I give, I'm going to give to you each trustee to show friendship, love and peace.
All right, moving on to 6B, which is individuals to address the board on items not on the agenda from district employees. And we have one this evening and it's Amanda Freitas.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Freitas and I, and I am a proud fourth grade teacher at Fremont Elementary. To say this school year has been extremely challenging would be an understatement and with those challenges have been many frustrations. I can't cover all those frustrations in three minutes, so I will start with the most pressing. Technology is extremely frustrating and disappointing to come off a year where we had to completely change the way we teach and deliver all of our instruction through a computer to then begin the new school year with absolutely no technology. We spent time and money last year revamping all of our lessons to work with Microsoft Teams and now we can't use any of those lessons. I have heard time and again at board meetings this year about the technology we have deployed to our schools, but this technology is completely useless if it is not working. I understand that the technology department is overwhelmed with tickets for service, but having to wait over a month to have a ticket resolved is detrimental to our students. Over a month ago, I put in a ticket because my cow is not charging the computers. That means for the last month, our fourth graders at Fremont have not been able to use computers. Our students haven't been able to complete the digital assignments we've prepared and they also haven't been able to complete iReady lessons. To make matters worse, we are now moving into our next testing window for iReady. Not having computers in the classroom means that our fourth graders can only work on the diagnostic once a week for 45 minutes during their intervention prep. If they are not able to complete it in one sitting, they must wait an entire week before they continue working on it. How successful do you think our students will be completing the test this way? In addition to my cow not charging computers, we don't even have enough space in our cows for all the computers we have at our site. I appreciate that technology gave us large power strips for charging, but this option is not practical. We don't have the space in our rooms to lay out the computers to charge and our outlets are not in a convenient location. Next, if not having access to technology wasn't bad enough, we continue to have printing issues at Fremont. There is one printer for the entire teaching staff to use and it also serves as our copy machine. Several days throughout the week, we get an error message when trying to print. So not only can we not have students complete their work on the computer, but we also cannot print out resources for the students to work on. The printing issue is extremely frustrating when trying to prepare and print out sub-lessons. There have been two occasions now where I got a late afternoon phone call from my kids daycare saying their pod would be closed due to a positive COVID exposure. The last thing I should have to worry about in this situation is whether or not I will be able to print resources and lesson plans for sub. The printing issues have continued since the beginning of the school year with ticket after ticket being put in with no real resolution. And I could tell you that not being able to print has lowered the morale at our school. Lastly, with regards to printing, I do not understand why we cannot connect personal printers to our computers. Our site wanted to purchase printers for our classrooms to share, but we're told by the tech department that we would not be reimbursed and the printers would not be supported.
So that concludes our general public comments. So we're moving on to district reports, which is section seven. We don't have any this evening. And then next up, we have our, a hearing. And it is our post-census trustee area redistricting. And this is going to be the initial scenarios for review and public input. And this is a hearing, so then I have to open the public hearing, right?
Yeah, first I'd like to introduce our demographer, Scott Newell from Cooperative Strategies and Mr. Larry Schinkie, who's attorney, I believe, with Atkinson, Anderson, lots of other names. Welcome.
Thank you Superintendent Nello. As I promised, I would bring the demographer. Here he is.
Lucky you. Hi, I'm Scott Newell, Cooperative Strategies. And going to run you through our presentation tonight. And my role tonight is really to listen to any feedback you have regarding some of the tweaks we've made to your existing trustee areas and then potentially make further revisions. Let's see here. There we go. So to go over our timeline a little bit here, November 10th, we looked at your existing census data and your existing trustee areas to determine whether or not you were still in compliance from the requirements from the education code. The reason we're doing this in general is education code 5019.5 says that anytime we have a new census and, and for everybody's information, it was delayed a year, you need to revisit your trustee areas. So in 2019, you guys went through the more involved process of going from at-large to by trustee areas. And so, you know, in that case, you were taking nothing, drawing lines, going through a process to determine these different areas and look at the requirements set forth. And so now, what you're required to do is, is look and say, what does the current census data say? What do our current lines look like? And are we still in compliance? And if not, you go through a redistricting process. And that's different than a creation process. In a redistricting process, you're going to make tweaks to your existing trustee areas to get you back in compliance, which is different than drawing a new trustee area. And so when we look at this and we'll go through this, we try to make those small tweaks to get you back in compliance and, and maintain the considerations that we're supposed to look at. So that's where we're at tonight. So tonight, as you can see, on the 15th, we're having our first hearing to look at two scenarios that we have drawn that get you back into compliance and we'll kind of walk through those. And then we're going to look for any feedback you might have. You might say, we're leaning towards one, it looks good. You might say, these are both rubbish and here's our thoughts. And so we can make some further tweaks or we can come back and see if there's any additional feedback. The goal is by March, we want to put something in front of the county register of voters so that you can adopt the tweaks and remain in compliance with your trustee areas. I'm going to pull my little spread up here so I can see better. So just a little snapshot of, of what we're talking about right now. The data that you were able to use in 2019 was from the 2010 census. And so when we compare 2010 to 2020 and why we're here tonight, you can see that you've grown from 107,000 to 120,000 approximately. And as your current trustee lines are drawn in the past, this is like maybe a five-second lag, you were in compliance at eight and a half percent. And now we have actually, because of the way that the growth has occurred with population in your different trustee areas, you're now at 17.7. And as a, a reference point, anything above 10 can be challenged in court. And so we wanted to now look at the different trustee areas to see what changes we can make. And my, ran off with it, so. All right, there we go. So this right here is just a snapshot of your current existing trustee areas. And as we move forward, thank you, you will see that we've done an outline on the two scenarios, so you'll be able to see what your existing overlay is based on the proposed changes. And just for reference, for folks in the back here that can't see, the yellow area is trustee area number one. here that can't see, the yellow area is trustee area number one. The green area is trustee area number two. The salmon color, as it looks down there, is trustee area number three, sorry. And number four is the blue, and then, on the left side of the screen there, in the violet color, is trustee area number five. Just a current look at where your current overlay is compared to the 2020 data. So, a little wayfinding here. When we go through, and our requirements say there's two things we must do. We must balance the population, and then, the second thing is, we need to consider the protected classes. And so, in this case here, what we look at is what the population change did to your existing overlay. And so, that 17.7% variance comes from looking at, as you can see here in trustee area number two, under population variance of 9.1, that's a deviation from the ideal trustee size. So, in this case, we take 120,288 residents, divide that by five, and it gets you your ideal trustee size of 24,058. And so, that's your benchmark line that you're trying to achieve. So, in this case, trustee area number two is 9% over that, and then, number three is 8.5% below that. And so, that gets your range of 17.7%. So, what we need to do now is make some tweaks to get that back down under 10. So, as we're doing that, and this goes back to the task that you had to do in 2019, there's some considerations that you are allowed to consider when making these tweaks. The first two up there on the upper left are required, they're must-do. So, each area should contain nearly equal number of inhabitants, and that again is that kind of balancing of population to get under that 10% threshold. And then, the second piece is drawn to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act. Now, I can say just because there's a lot of data that you're looking at here, both scenarios that we've put in front of you, when overlaying the current demographic spread within each trustee area when we've made our tweaks, I want to say the biggest variance on any of those in any particular group is 1.5%. So, by doing some of these tweaks, it's not substantially changing any of that spread that you guys went through and approved two years ago. So, really, when looking at this as our first consideration, was how we make some small tweaks to grab some population here or there to get them a little more equal within each trustee area. Beyond that, and these are some things just to consider tonight, looking at these different considerations. So, these are things to consider if you want to make additional tweaks. Compact contiguous as much as possible. So, again, nice grouped blocks, respect communities of interest as much as possible. And so, you'll see in a couple scenarios, both are pretty similar. One does do a little bit bigger grab in a certain area, so maybe that's something to look at. Following man-made or natural geographic features, so roads, valleys, mountains, things like that, respect incumbency if possible, and then, any other local considerations, which, you know, we see sometimes they look at school sites and where they're located, and how many are within a particular trustee area, et cetera. So, getting to the scenarios now. So, again, just to wayfind a little bit on this map, the bluish, or excuse me, the purplish line, as it looks like up there, is an overlay of your existing trustee areas onto this revision. And so, in both cases, this one here, you will see the same changes on scenario two with an additional change on two. So, you can see on this one right here, trustee area number one is unchanged from the current way that it's been drawn. Trustee area number two, down there, and just to look on the south side of trustee area number two, you can see that under that, the existing area goes a little further south. Under this one, we've actually moved it up some to pick up some population there. Under number three, it's, you know, the same thing that I've said right there, that encroaches on number two. But then, over on the west side, you can see that that line that used to go straight down has now been adjusted some to pick up and change some population there. Number four, same changes that I just mentioned with that line, and then, the same with number five. So, if we flip to the next page, what that has done has taken your variance from 17.7 down to 8.3. Let me grab a different sheet here and just talk from a comparison standpoint what that does at least to the numbers. So, the changes that really occurred through this, from a population standpoint, trustee area number two went down by about 1,000 residents. Trustee area number three went up by about 1,000 residents. One, four, and five didn't change in this scenario. From percentage changes, as I mentioned, everything is relatively nominal. Your biggest changes that you might see here, under this scenario, trustee area number two, the white population decreases by about 0.7%. Our African-American population goes up by about a percentage point. And in trustee area number three, there's really not many substantial changes under that one either. So, those are our biggest moves under our citizen voting age population there. And then, again, just for everybody's benefit here, when looking at that category, we look at citizen voting age population, which is the number of people who are eligible old enough to vote, as opposed to population. So, under scenario two here, everything that I just mentioned is the same. So, all those changes we just talked about occurred, but we decided to make one more change to see if we could impact the variance percentage further. And so, you can see here that that biggest change occurs under trustee area number four, where we're really swapping some population from number one and picking up, picking some up in number four and taking some away in number one. Okay, so that's the only change under this map here. Now, what that does, if we go to the data, is it takes that variance down to 1.8%, which is, from a population standpoint, and the goal's very good, as you can imagine, you've got almost an equal number of inhabitants in each trustee area. Again, looking at the numbers there, the biggest changes that we have from our protected classes in this case, we've got, in trustee area number two, again, the white population decreases by about 0.8%, our African-American population increases by about a percent. In trustee area number three, a similar change there. We do have our Asian population going up in that scenario by about a percentage point. And in trustee area number four, we have a change to our Hispanic population where it increases 1%. And those are our major changes in that category there from your protected classes. So, at this point, I'll entertain some questions. And if we have any legal questions, we've got, we've got some commentary here for that too. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. So, I'll kick it off, and I'll first start with, I am leaning towards scenario two more because I do like that the variance is, it's really pretty equal for each one of the trustee areas. The only, the only, so I'm kind of looking at area number two, and I'm just trying to, wait, okay, so in the, and I feel like it's going to be so hard to explain. I'm actually just going to get up.
Southeast.
And point to it. I know, it's southeast, but it's a very specific section. And so, I know that these are by census tracts, but I think it would be kind of interesting to see, because I can see for area three, we kind of went up into area two, but that area right there, I would kind of, it seems like it's going to be densely populated, but, you know, that little Pruitt Ranch area is getting cut in half, so I'm just thinking, you know, there could be potential there, but I also anticipate that that's probably a really populated area. But I would like to see at our next meeting, something that kind of takes from that area rather than going like up. So, kind of just adjusting it a little bit.
Just to make sure that I'm understanding correctly. So, we'll move that southernmost portion up some.
Yes.
And then, from the area that we did move to the north, leave that as is or shrink that down accordingly?
I think it would shrink that down accordingly, but what's going to end up happening is that, because we have to, basically, the name of the game is we need to decrease one and two, we need to increase three, four, and five, right? So, I think that depending on how that little neighborhood gets changed right there, you know, I think that area to the north, maybe shrink it down accordingly, or, you know, depending on how populated that area is, just kind of, it's kind of hard to like guess without actually seeing the, you know, census tract numbers for that area, but just play around with that line a little bit, just to see if that area can be, maybe that neighborhood can be intact more. Because that's really the only one where I see it's like kind of cutting a neighborhood really in half. And so, I'll pass it over to somebody else, trustee Dr. Lewis.
Yeah, so I think, you know, I can tell that there's a lot of work that's been put into this, but I guess my initial question is, how much public involvement was, had in sort of the creation of this, or how much public input has happened with this?
Under our redistricting, we haven't had any. Under creation, we were required to do a large amount of engagement. Under the redistricting, there typically isn't. It's just taking what was already adopted and making small tweaks. So, we haven't to date. And that's what, you know, in this scenario, doing these public hearings, which is still required, allows the opportunity to garner any feedback.
Yeah, I mean, I think my, my concern, well, not my concern, but I think one of the considerations for me is ensuring that we have public input and in conversation around how these lines are drawn. That's kind of my consideration.
And so, sorry, I totally forgot this is a public hearing, so I have to open the public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. So, officially open, and we do have a public comment. That means that folks get up to five minutes. But I see that our attorney came up about this question around engagement.
Two comments. First of all, a public hearing is not required, but we always recommend it, clearly. We understand that point. Secondly, because of the schedules of your board meetings, your next board meeting is not until January 26th, and in the meantime, certainly anybody can make a comment or provide information to Scott, and we'll tweak around with it. And this is a public hearing tonight. You also have the ability to say, okay, January 26th, we're going to hear more comments, or we're going to talk about the next maps, and then schedule another meeting in February, because you have until March 1st.
Yeah.
We also created a full page on our website that's interactive, that you can provide feedback. We're going to add a link to every school's individual website also, because a lot of, you know, parents don't necessarily come to the district one, they'll go to their schools, so.
You know, the intervening holiday period break always makes a problem, but in your case, you have the, you know, the first three weeks of January to do more of this if you need to.
And so, if, and again, this comment is sort of for public consumption, I know how to contact you. If the public wanted to contact with feedback, they would go through that website?
Website, or they can provide in writing.
And how would they?
And she'll transmit it to Scott, or however that needs to be done through Kelly.
Okay. I mean, because it's important that we have, you know, we're making these decisions, obviously, with the board, but obviously, but also, I want to include, I want to make sure that we're including the public.
I've had people contact Scott directly.
Yeah.
And then, he shares with us what he has spoken with other folks, and if we receive any comments too.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you.
May I, Chair? Yes, trustee Rocha.
I'm just wondering if we considered, and maybe, I just, just thinking about this, it's so, it looks like it's a way that we hadn't figured out before, but I believe public is, it's important to have public, and I'm wondering if we could go through, and I'm not sure, superintendent, the ELAC and the D-LAC and the parents, and have this presentation to them in the language, explaining what we're doing, because they do have meetings, and I'm sure they have one that's current right in January.
Yes, we plan to go to all of our parent meetings and to discuss this and let them know the opportunity to provide input, explain the process.
Good.
So that they're aware.
Okay, I wasn't sure about that, but that's, I think we need to do that, because actually, this is really, we were looking at last time, because it was districts we had to get into, and we figured we had it arranged properly, but because now we're going for the next 10 years, I think we really need to be real careful to make sure that the public is aware of where we're going. I went to the city council last night, and I was amazed that this was coming up so soon, and I hadn't even given it a thought. And so, I'm aware that because of the Zoom and everything, we were closed down, that there's a need for some communication on what's going. What looks simple to us might not be to the public.
Correct. Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, I have two questions. One is if you all have any insights or thoughts on, when looking at citizen voting age population, there's a big difference when looking at scenario one and scenario two in terms of some of the variance you see there, and maybe any considerations that we should be thinking about with that.
Just to restate your question, when you're talking just mainly about the spreads between each class and?
Yeah, so like, for example, in scenario one, you know, the citizen voting age population ranges from, you know, low 14,000 to, in trustee area one, to nearly 17,000 in trustee area four, whereas in scenario two, you now have trustee area one is just under 13,000, and trustee area four is now over 18,000 in terms of the citizen voting age population, and thinking about how those kind of dynamics affect, you know, representation and things like that.
So, we haven't looked at it because the requirements say we need to look at total population. And so, that's when, from percentage of citizen voting age people, we try to look at the percentages and look at the distribution in that capacity.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense on why that wasn't looked at. It's just something that I think I'm thinking about when I'm looking at these different scenarios. The other question I have is, I know when I was looking at the materials for the creation of these districts, there was data on a stratification on income levels for the different areas, and I'm wondering if we have data on that that can come to us, or if that's something that's planning on coming to us?
It's not something that we have for a redistricting process. Certainly, we could probably have the data just to help with your thoughts of how we can make tweaks in addition to the other considerations. But typically, we use that during creation, not redistricting, but it's certainly available.
I would really like to see that in January, just as like, you know, for whatever tweaks are made, I think that would be helpful to see.
And that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Trustee Heck?
I'm comfortable with the presentation you gave today. I thank you very much for the details, and I look forward to the revisions, as you already said, are going to be happening down the road so we can see to how to adjust our approach to it.
And then, as well, I wanted to ask, were you a demographer for districting?
I personally was not.
Okay.
Do you have an idea who was in 2019?
Well, I was just asking, just because, you know, we did have a lot of pretty rich discussion around the communities of interest, and so, I don't, as we're thinking about how best to inform the community about how to engage in this process, you know, the city has a mapping tool, and so, that's kind of how we're directing folks for that process to give input. But for this, I mean, we don't have that mapping tool, so really, it is going to be communities of interest. So, I'm wondering for you, as our numbers person, what would be the most helpful way to give feedback? Would it be to, you know, I'm sure folks can make a little sketchy drawing on these and send that in. Would it be better to just say? Would it be better to just say communities of interest? Because I could definitely see some areas in one, two, and three, for sure, where there are neighborhoods. And if it would be helpful for you to know that the, you know, the neighborhood off 18th Street, you know, that's a community of interest. I guess I'm just trying to wonder how, how best that input can be given to you without having to, like, I don't know, it just seems like it could be get complex or not that intuitive for you as a demographer.
Yeah, there's, there's, we provide some survey links on, with some other clients, so it's a direct conduit in that case. Where, you know, where you might need to have a broader discussion, the interactive tools, and we do create those for other clients, they're in the creation process.
Okay.
And so it's substantially different process than what you've already adopted, which now by law, it says you need to revisit what was adopted and just lay over current census data. So redistricting by nature is to make minor tweaks to what you've already approved without going through a full creation process again. So you could always go through a full creation process again, but right now, we've, you know, we're going through redistricting.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to, like, the whole creation process, just in terms of when we are making these minor tweaks, if you live in one of these little neighborhoods, how, how to best kind of communicate that with you, whether actually drawing on like this map or just, you know, formatting it in a certain way. But it sounds like whatever we're going to have on our website will probably kind of help guide people to how best to give that input.
Yeah, and as you know, soliciting feedback always, whether it's us or anything, is always hard to get out and exposure in front of everybody. We do see through others right now that are maybe a month ahead of you, that might be going through creation and really trying very hard to get that out. We have a link, an email link, that they can submit that way. They are sometimes taking photos of a marked up map and emailing them. They can give specific addresses, and those are things that, you know, we, we look at this from a bird's eye view. And so really, we are here with you guys to get that feedback, so they are revised in a manner which is personal to you guys. And so however that occurs, we're open to it. But, you know, we've seen, and what we've been using elsewhere, is those, those kind of mechanisms to collect feedback.
And so can we make sure that we get the link to, you know, for those public comments and sort of that email address on the meeting minutes? So that way, the public, you know, has access to it and they're aware? And then also those, the ELAC, D-LAC, and all those other parent meetings, if we can get the dates to those, so that way we can have sort of, you know, representation when those meetings occur.
We'll get those too, definitely.
Yeah.
And then too, before we let them go, I'm wondering if my colleagues have a preference one way or another, because I am much more strongly leaning towards two. If you do have a, you know, a strong leaning, it might be helpful to share that too. Or if there's none, then.
And I do believe we had a public comment.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry, we definitely do. Thank you so much, Superintendent Anello. Okay, we're going to move to our public comment, I'm so sorry. Lindsay Emesqua. And you have up to five minutes, Ms. Emesqua.
Hi, good evening. I won't take five minutes, I just have a quick request, I guess. I've been working with the mapping tool a little bit from the city council, and I was wondering if maybe it would be possible, because when you look at a map without kind of population perspective, people look at size, and you think, okay, Area One, Two, Three, Four, and Five are all the same size, and you have no idea that's how concentrated some of that population is. And without us having that feedback, when we're making the mapping tool, it makes it very difficult to create a map and provide proper feedback. So if it was possible to actually have a mapping tool, I think that would be very helpful for parents to be able to provide feedback. And that was all on that. Just want to tell everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, thank you.
Thank you. And so I do, I think that having a little bit more data on the next maps that are presented to us in January, I think, sounds like something that at least two of us have had, okay, and then I'm getting more head nods. But is there any leaning that folks have towards either one, one way or the other? No, it doesn't seem like it, no. Nope, okay. Well, do you folks have everything that you need for January?
Yep.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
I hope you all have a good holiday.
Yeah, you too.
Good holiday.
All right, I'll have to close the public hearing. All right. Great. Moving on. So we are going to Section Nine, we have public presentations, we don't have any this evening. Then we have our consent items. We do have two public comments, so maybe we move to public comment and then talk about if we want to pull anything. So I'll start first with Velma Wilson, and then after that, it's Mrs. West. So Velma Wilson, and then Mrs. West.
For the record, do you mind stating which items under consent?
Oh, sorry, thank you. Yeah, they're both for 10X, X as in?
Xylophone.
Xylophone, thank you. Xavier.
Thank you so much.
And that is, yeah, so, 10X.
Good evening again, Board Trustees. I believe each one of you did receive the item and the gift that I presented to you on behalf of the Golden State Warriors. Steph Curry just is doing his thing. But I wanted to give you that gift from me to show you, again, a friendship. And I'm speaking on this item because this contract has to do with me. I am again Velma Wilson, representing Velma Wilson on behalf of Velma Wilson. And it's important, because I know that there is at least one, really haven't had a really heart-to-heart in-depth conversation with trustee Hernandez, but I have had those conversations with Ms. Householder. And as you are looking at this contract, and hopefully you will see the data that has been provided to attach, that you will understand that our kids matter. Not just our black and brown, all kids matter. During the pandemic, I was very successful, and I, yes, I'm going to proud myself on creating and coming up with something so unique that I wish we could have opened it up to every school in this district to participate in. But unfortunately, that didn't happen. And the work doesn't stop. I don't tend to always want to toot my own horn, because that's not why I do the work. I do the work because I believe in the students and families of this district. I could sit behind and my kids have graduated and gone on and not do nothing, like so many in this community. But guess what? I'm still standing, ready and willing to do the work. Today was nothing short of amazing. Monday was nothing short of amazing. Kids left out of those rooms, those classrooms, and mind you, we're not talking 10 children, we're talking 20, 30. Today, I did all grade levels at Dallas Ranch, totally, close to 67 children. They all received gifts, they all received love, they all felt empowered to continue on in doing the work. The data doesn't lie. I am a challenge each and every last one of you, again, to come to see the work live. Thank you again to trustee Rocha and to trustee Lewis, who have intentionally made it a priority to be there and to witness. Thank you to our superintendent, because without your support, this would not be possible. Thank you again to Bridget Spires, who was sitting in the audience awaiting to find out what is going to happen. Thank you for believing in me to do the work.
Next up, we have Mrs. West, and this is also on the same letter, which is X as
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time this evening. It was really important for me to show up tonight to show support for those who have been in the community doing the work. I'm up here representing a mother of Antioch Unified School District children. I've got two children at Park Middle School, and I have a son at Belshaw, and they are thriving in this community. Also, I am a media professional, and I feel like our stories aren't told enough. We hear a lot of negative stuff in the media, and I think it's our job to tell the stories of all the good things that we have going on here in the community. I will say, the pandemic hit a lot of us hard, a lot of students suffered, and there were programs that were only available at certain schools and not available for children at other schools. And one of those programs that we participated in was the Lunchtime with Ms. Velma. And the only reason why we were able to hear about that is because we had a personal connection. Through that program, my daughter, my son, they were empowered, they were motivated. I see some faces up on the panel today that they were able to actually engaged with. It was an amazing experience, and they were also able to connect with celebrities that they wouldn't have had the opportunity to meet had they not been a part of that amazing platform. And I said, wow, what about if we had a program like that that would benefit all the children district-wide? Well, in order for that to happen, Ms. Velma needs the resources. If any of you guys were able to sit in any of those sessions, you would see those kids were so motivated and just, it melted my heart every time we got off of a call with Lunchtime with Ms. Velma. So I challenge you guys, if you have not participated, if you haven't seen it, I know those sessions were recorded, to really take a look and see what the program was all about. I can say from personal experience, the work that I see being done in the community by this woman is amazing. I am now a part of a program called GirlSpace at Dallas Ranch Middle School, where we mentor young women who are going through some challenges. And we are able to challenge those young ladies to have self-worth and confidence and really build off of what it is that they want to see for themselves. So I really want the district, I would like for you guys to come out and get involved and see what we're really doing. We're out there in the community, we're doing the work, but we need help, and she needs help. So please, put in the work, thank you.
All right, and so I want to have, pull 10X for a separate vote, but is there any others that folks have questions on, if we want to vote?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to vote, consent items A through X.
All right, so the motion is for A through X, but I'm pulling X for a separate vote.
I think all of them together.
Well, she is, I second his motion.
Okay, so second motion for A through X, so then I will make a substitute motion that we vote on all consent items, A through W. So is there a second to my substitute? A through W?
Yeah, I'll second.
So seconded by trustee Hernandez. So Ms. Cavalero, can you call the roll on the substitute motion? Trustee Hack?
I'm sorry, don't understand what we're doing. I'm sorry.
I can't explain, you made a motion, there was a substitute to that motion. We're required to vote on the substitute first, when there's a first and second, so we're voting on President Householder's motion, and if that passes, then we'll go to X. If it doesn't, then we go back to your motion.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder? Yes. Vice President Lewis?
No.
Trustee Rocha?
No.
The motion fails two to three with trustees Hack, Vice President Lewis, and trustee Rocha voting no. Wonderful. So then we're going to move on to the original motion, which was to accept the consent calendar as is. Before I call for that roll, I will just say that I'm going to abstain from this vote, because I would not have supported item X, because I don't think it's appropriate for me to vote in support of an individual who's been disrespectful to not only myself, but to other district leaders, community leaders, and who brings an air of negativity. And so that's why I'll be abstaining from it, rather than saying no on all the consent items, because I would have only said no on X. And so?
And I'll drop a comment.
Oh, yeah.
And I do just want to, since we're not speaking on things separately, I think, it's a little weird that we're not doing that, there's no reason not to be able to speak on things separately. But, you know, I'll be candid about item X, I'm very glad to see some of that data piece in the end. I think that's really important, and I'd like to see that continue to be expanded. I think that was really cool to see that, and like, people, like I've always said, and like Wes said, when you have data, when you have objective information, we can really begin to have a conversation about what things are truly helping students, so I do appreciate that there.
Madam Chair, can I speak?
Yeah, absolutely, trustee Rocha.
You know, I have been present at these presentations. In fact, I was there, I was at Dallas Ranch, and I was also a Black Diamond. I missed the first one, but, I mean, excuse me, I would have gone to this Friday, but I have something else that has coming up, otherwise I would be there also. I'm amazed at the amount of trust those young girls, and it's girls that I'm talking about in particular, have with Velma, and what her spilled to them is, if you have problems, if you have issues, call me. And she gives them these items that they might not have gotten, and there's, there was a bag full, I didn't bring it, I'm sorry, a stuffed animal, hand lotion, things that the young girls like, the lipsticks and stuff, you know, the, it was, it's just something that's given to them personally. And some of these girl, I'm afraid, probably never has had that opportunity to receive them. And it was like a present, a Christmas present. And then what I'm wearing right here, the jingles, this was another thing that was done, and that is to give, each one was given one, and they were to give to someone next to them or the next side, to, so they can understand giving is positive and not the negative remarks, I mean, things that girls tend to do. And I remember, I'm not that old not to remember, how we used, as teenagers, how we were not very nice to each other. So I'm just saying to you, that Velma has done a great job, and she will continue, and I am very supportive of her, and I'll try. My worry, and I don't know how she does it financially, is how she gives all these goodies and all these things that she gives, food, she had pizzas for each one, she had, I mean, donuts, she had chips and sodas, and, I mean, that's money. And so I don't know how she does it, and I'm saying to, I'm thinking to myself, how can we help her with the budget? I know that she's, there's a grant money that she would receive, but not with all the things that she does. And I know she has a lot of ways of picking up food by, you know, people that will donate to her. But I'm just amazed at what she does, and seeing the girls' faces and seeing, they were doing their hats, Christmas hats, with their names on it, and so proud, they wanted to keep them there to dry, so they wouldn't take them out and they would be messed up. So they were coming back to pick up their hats to take home. So, you know, those are, maybe it's a small group of girls, but sometimes some of these girls are the ones that are needed, and so that's why I support her efforts, that's all.
Superintendent Anello, when I look at the purchase order reports, reimbursements are submitted from most of our consultants, right, for items like that, that they purchase?
It has to be involved, not necessarily.
I've seen purchase order reports, though, reimbursements that this consultant has put in for donuts and pizza, is that not true?
I, I don't, I'm not aware of that, I'd have to go back and review that.
I thought that the amount that's given to the person is for the work they do, hourly time they put in, not for the items that they give to the students. That I know, that she's going out, and should I say begging, and she gets it, and she brings it in. She's not taking it in for herself, she's giving it to the children, the young ladies. And I'm just impressed, that's all.
Yeah, well, everybody has an opportunity to put in reimbursement, so.
And I'll add, you know, I think of a couple scenarios where I've been involved, you know, it's, sometimes I get a seven o'clock or six o'clock in a morning call, and it's a student on the other end with, with Ms. Velma or Velma, who needs sort of, well, when they call me, they need a, like, that male sort of engagement, and there's, there's some conversations, obviously I can't go into detail, because some of the situations are sort of sensitive. But there are, there are conversations that happen as a result of the relationship that student has with Velma. She then introduced them to me, we have a conversation, and some of the things that could have likely happened are averted. And, you know, I know the data is important, obviously I'm a big data nerd myself. However, it's those intimate conversations that happen that really sold me. Because again, you hear stories about people, and you hear all these conversations and all these things, but when those things happen, and I'm a part of them... all these things, but when those things happen and I'm a part of them, that sort of is, that's the message for me, that's the selling point for me, you know, so...
Ms. Cavalero, could you call the roll on the initial motion that was on the table, which was to approve all consent calendar items as is?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Abstain.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion passes four zero with President Householder abstaining.
Thank you, Ms. Cavalero. Moving on to Section 11, so first up, we have election of President of the, for the Board of Education.
Madam Chair, may I speak?
Yeah, absolutely.
At this point, as you're going to open the conversation of election for President, I would like to be, put Gary Hack as the future chair.
So, that's a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion made by Trustee Rocha to nominate, nominating Trustee Hack as the next Board President. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Dr. Lewis. Is there any discussion?
I believe we have a speaker card.
Thank you. Yes, we do. So, Beatriz Hernandez.
As we begin a new term, we must think about the future and the best way we can continue to progress this city. I think it is essential that we have leaders in positions of power who are willing to work in a respectful manner with their colleagues and who put students' needs first. I'm writing today to urge you to keep Mary Rocha out of these positions. Over the past year, I've seen Trustee Rocha time and time again halt and postpone any efforts for change to the city and waste valuable time to continue petty feuds with fellow Board members. As long as she's been in politics, Trustee Rocha has profited off and politicized her Latina identity while failing to properly address the needs of people like me, my community, and other immigrant families like mine. While I appreciate the efforts to raise awareness and provide bilingual services, these are bare minimum at best, and fail to provide families with the full resources that they actually need. To claim that you advocate for the Latino community and at the same time complain about parent engagement proves that you've never taken the time to understand the complexities of our experiences. After so many years in politics, it is unfortunate to see someone who is so unwilling to learn what it takes to be an effective leader. I'm looking forward to a new positive change in leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then, Trustee Hernandez? Oh, Trustee Hernandez had a, the motion's still on the table.
Just a comment on this, I was under the impression that Trustee, that Vice President Lewis would be stepping in as President, given that he was Vice President, I'm wondering if he'd like to speak on that, I mean, not to put you on the spot, but that was my, you know, I think that was the understanding of how we usually do things in the Presidents that we've sat in the past.
And if it's okay to, before Trustee Dr. Lewis, I just wanted to say, you know, I really didn't expect that you would be President as well, and I hope, you know, that you would, will be President by the end of this discussion, just because I would hate to see another Black trustee get passed up.
Right, so, so this is a very difficult decision for me, but without going into too much details, and I'll respect, no further questions about, you know, what I'm going to say is, I have family challenges, not with my immediate marriage family, so it's not that, so, you know, it's nothing like that, but there's some caregiving that I have to do this year that came up unexpectedly, and as a result, you know, splitting the, splitting the attention, or giving the attention needed to the presidency is something that will be outside my purview for, and I don't know how long it's going to be.
So, you're saying then that even if we nominated you, you want to be...
I would likely decline for this year.
And then let's move to...
And I want to qualify, that it's not that I don't want the position, it's not that I don't respect it, it's simply because, you know, I have some familial things that I have to attend to that will take me away from the full duties of the presidency.
So, we do have another public comment, but then what I'm hearing you say before we move to this public comment is that you would still be the Vice, you would still entertain being the Vice President, though. I'll take that laugh as a yes for now. All right, let's go, Ms. Velma Wilson, put in for 11A, which is what we're talking about right now, and then we'll go back to, there's still a motion on the table, too.
Good evening again. I'm going to try to do this very, keep emotions out of this. First of all, I want to say that Mary, I am very proud of the work that you have done in your history of politics. I have witnessed, unlike some, I have actually witnessed you be at D-LAC and E-LAC meetings, even the foster care meetings where those parents have to do, and some need translation services, without even asking, you provided. The parent engagement coffee and donuts that was spoke about, that was happening a couple of years ago prior to the pandemic and shutting down, that was a district-wide initiative to help push parent involvement and engagement, because, God, why? That's a part of the LCAP. Mary Rocha was there, right alongside, providing those services. I would hope that this Board would not overlook Mary, but continually to encourage her. I am asking and hoping that to neutralize and to continue to keep on the goals and the mission of what we all should be doing is being loud, proud, AUSD on behalf of our students and families, that we have someone that's going to bring some calm and some resolve and some dignity back into the role of School Board President. Gary Hack would do a phenomenal job. Antonio, I know you would probably do a phenomenal job, but I know you're still learning, and I respect that. Dr. Lewis, I already know, you are an amazing leader, an amazing leader. You are a friend, and yes, you get on my head, and we're able to talk with dignity. I don't always agree with you, there are several things I don't agree with you, but guess what? We still remain respectful. It's a blasphemy that someone would sit there and say that I am negative and that I am disrespectful to community members and to elected officials, which many that I support heartily, I support, I support wholeheartedly. Ellie, Householder, you forgot that I supported you. I don't know what happened, but guess what? Growing maturity and all of that is still on the table. So, Mary, again, because I just believe that you were attacked, and I just want you to know, I'm proud of you, and thank you for your life of service to this here community of Antioch.
All right, and then we got another public comment for 11A, Lindsay Mesqua.
Good evening again, everybody. I just want to come up and say, Dr. Lewis, I'm very saddened to hear that you're not going to be taking the position we were all so very hopeful, but I think that Gary Hack will do a phenomenal job, and I absolutely support that appointment as well, not because of your, Dr. Lewis, not because of anything else, not your race, not your sexuality, not your gender, but because you are the most qualified in our, in our view, and I'm sorry that other people are reducing you to your race and not your qualifications, and I hope next year you will take it. Thank you so much for everything you do for our students. Thank you.
All right, and so there is a motion on the table to elect Board President Hack. I will just say that I'm not going to be supporting this, not because I don't think Trustee Hack would do a great job, I have served with him as he has served as Board President, and I know that they would, he would do a good job, but I would just like to see somebody else in the position, so I'm going to be supporting Trustee Hernandez. But, I just wanted to explain my vote before we took it. So, if Ms. Cavalero could call the, oh, sorry.
I want him to go ahead and make a comment, because I, I mean, I agree, I think Trustee Hack is very capable of doing the job and creating stability, but I don't think that's what this school district needs, is stability, we need progress forward, we need progressive thinking, we need changes that are going to help our students, that are going to move things in a better direction. In the pandemic that we're currently still going through, there has been a lot of disruption and a lot of challenges with that, but within disruption, within challenges, there's always an opportunity to come about something new, something better, something that pushes us forward. I understand that there, so, so in general, I'd like to say that, that I would like to take the position of Board President, and I present that as another option for my fellow trustees in the given vote that we're about to take. I think that it's important that we keep moving forward, and I understand the reservations with my experience, but I've, as a Latino male, spent my entire life being underestimated and people thinking I can't do things, and I am 100% confident that I'd be able to do the job and keep pushing us forward and keep moving this district in a direction that we need to go, that we so desperately need to keep moving towards. So, that's the context of which I take my next vote, not in the context of whether Trustee Hack can lead us as a Board.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Trustee Hernandez.
I, I support, I, I say that I understand, Trustee Hernandez, and I believe that the time will come, but it's not that, if we have, it's just like you said, we want to move forward, you, there's some new ideas that you want to interpret, well, it takes three to get those new ideas, it's not the Chair, the Chair is only, takes care of the formality, it's us as Board members who makes the change, it's us as Board members that bring up the topics, and it's us to question the superintendent and the staff as to what they're doing and how they're getting it done. So, again, the Chair is only the one that takes care of the functional part of a Board meeting and represents us, and what I'm looking for is stability in this district, so our teachers and our parents understand that we're going back to at least some quiet time and some togetherness, and we have governance coming up that's going to work with us, and so that's the reason I feel that Gary Hack is a good person to be in place as the Chair.
And I guess with that, too, since Trustee Hernandez did say that he would be interested, then I would like to make a substitute motion that Trustee Hernandez be made Board President. So, is there a second on my substitute?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. And so, we'll go with our substitute motion first and then move from there. So, Ms. Cavalero, if you could call the roll on that.
Trustee Hack?
No.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
No.
Trustee Rocha?
No.
The motion fails two to three.
All right, and then if you could call the roll for...
And I would like to...
Oh, sorry, Trustee.
And so, my vote was not that I don't think that Trustee Hernandez could do the job, I think he, you know, he and I have had extensive conversations about a number of different things. He's a brilliant, brilliant leader. It's more of understanding the nuance of the Board. I'm fairly new, and sort of stepping in and sort, you know, I have an, I have experience in education, he has a multitude of experiences, brilliant young man, and I've struggled with this, you know, with this decision, and I'm still struggling with it now, so, you know, please don't accept, please don't hear this as me voting against Antonio saying that he's incapable. It's, it's much more nuanced than that.
Ms. Cavalero, can you call the roll?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
No.
President Householder?
No.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion passes three to two with Trustee Hernandez and President Householder voting against.
All right, and so, next up, we have election of Vice President for the Board, and so, I guess we'll start, I would...
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, please.
I would like to nominate Trustee Hernandez.
And I'll second that motion. And so, if there's no discussion...
I accept the nomination, so, I mean, and I think I said what I needed to say previously, and I think that resonates to my thoughts as the potential of being Vice President.
Ms. Cavalero, can you call the roll?
Yes, Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion passes five zero.
Congratulations to you both. All right, and so, let's move on to the next, another election, so, number C, as in CAT, Election of Board Member Liaison to the Contra Costa County School Boards Association. And so, could Superintendent Anello maybe help us with this one, or?
I'm, I'm going through my memory, trying to remember who last served in this position. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Trustee Hernandez previously served in this position, I don't know if he has anything he wants to say about the time allotment.
Yeah, so, I served in this group for the past year, it's where a lot of, all the trustees from the Contra Costa region meet together and discuss ways that we're going to move all the districts moving forward. I really enjoyed the experience, we meet maybe like roughly once a quarter, and unless anyone else has strong opinions, I'd be happy to continue doing this.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm just curious, and that's actually probably a question for Trustee Rocha, do you know how this differs from the item that you're bringing up about the Delegate Assembly? That's the larger CSBA.
Delegate Assembly is from the state of California, CSBA. What Trustee Hernandez is doing is with the county, and so, if you go on Zoom, the county provides month, well, monthly meetings, or quarterly, excuse me, and they present persons that will speak to issues like budget, et cetera, and it's coming from CSBA, so it's more of a localized presentation than the other one, which is statewide.
Yeah, and I can add just a tiny bit more to that, yeah, that, what Trustee Rocha's going to bring up is that, yeah, the California School Board Association, which is our statewide association, the Contra Costa School Board Association is something that is local but doesn't exist necessarily in every single county, it's something that leaders and school board leaders in this particular county took the initiative to put this group together, so it's not something that you'll see everywhere, and so that's probably the big differentiator there.
Okay, that makes sense. I would love for you to continue serving if it sounds, you know, if you're enjoying it, so, what, since this is an action item, how do we, do we put them...
I move approval.
So, move approval, moved by Trustee Rocha to...
I'll second.
And seconded by Trustee Dr. Lewis to elect Trustee Antonio Hernandez to the Contra Costa County School Board Association, and if there are no questions, I will ask Ms. Cavalero to call the roll.
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion passes five zero.
Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have D, our 2021-22 First Interim Report. So, Deputy Superintendent Romeo.
Yes, this evening, we're here to provide the Board and the community with our 2021-22 First Interim Report. Joe, thank you.
Can everyone hear in the audience?
No, I can barely hear.
Okay, let me step a little closer to the thing. So, the Governing Board of the Antioch Unified School District adopted the 21-22 Budget on June 24th, 2021. We are required by law to provide two updates to the Board, the community, the county, Office of Ed, as well as the state of California, that shows our financial condition at two points in time during the year. The report tonight for the first interim covers all of the financial condition of the district through October 31st, 2021. So, there will be a few slides in here where I show you some monies that are coming in that will be in our next interim. The first interim report serves a dual purpose, one is to detail any changes in the budget, in the adopted budget, in accordance with the state adopted criteria and standards, but most importantly, to communicate the overall financial conditions of the district again to all of our constituencies as of October 31st. I'm, I'm going to highlight for you some of the changes, and they are substantial because as the Board knows, there was some one-time monies that came in. So, for this particular slide, if you can look at the three last columns, those are the relevant columns that we look at, it's your revised budget that the Board adopted within 45 days of the adopted budget, where we are in first interim, and then what those differences are. And I will detail them in more detail on the next few slides, but as far as revenue, we have an additional 11 million plus in revenue. Since our revised budget, we have approximately 8.8 in additional expenses, because many of those revenue sources are, obviously have expenses that will be apportioned against them, for an overall change to our budget of 2.9 million dollars. If you look at our bottom line, the percentage of change, though, is about 0.74% to our ending balance. balance, which puts us now at 12.36%. Next slide. So our, primarily our changes in our revenue, um, our LCFF did drop slightly from 73.06% to 72%. This is something that has been consistent throughout the state, um, as they're changing how you qualify for free and reduce. So most of us, almost all of us in the county have gone down slightly, um, and that's about $448,000. We have had some additions in federal revenues, Title I, Title II, Title III, much of that is our carryover. Um, the CSI school improvement along with geared on learning loss for a increase in our revenues of $6.1 million. We have additional state revenues, that's our Expanding Learning Opportunity Program. The Board previously adopted a plan for that program, um, a CPA, Career Technical Education, the SPED Prevention and Resolution, and our SPED, uh, Learning Recovery, that is approximately $6 million. And then just slight, um, increase in our local revenues, which was an insurance reimbursement of $67,000. That is, equals our $11,820,000 increase in our revenues. In that, we have, um, allocated expenditures against those. For our federal programs, there are mostly certificated salaries. A lot of that is our, um, hourly rate, uh, services that we provide. You heard a lot about the after-school programs, tutorings and things of that nature, um, books and supplies and technology purchases of 2.9. Um, we do have, um, services and other operating programs and, and many, much of this money came into special education, so you see a lot of those increases there, along with our, um, after-school program, BACR, which is the vendor that we use, and a, a slight increase in our, um, capital outlay. So we have a net increase to our fund balance of $2.9 million. The sum of that money is legally restricted and as I mentioned before, the Board has already adopted a plan on some of these. We have the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program, the Learning Communities for Success Program, CSCA Professional Development, that is a carryover from a prior grant, um, SB 117, which is some COVID-19 relea, uh, response, and some local donations. We, we have been able to maintain our 3%, which is legally required, along with the Board resolution of 2% um, that some years ago that the Board wanted to make sure that we had a little extra, um, designation or unforeseen circumstances. We do have to recognize that many of our expenses this year are in one-time money. So that is the designated for structural deficit. As we look at the programs that we have this year to determine whether or not they're going to be continued next year in our budget, and we'll start that process in January, um, we would need to look at what other funding source they would be moved into. And things like our counselors and, and some of our needed services are within that one-time monies right now. And that is the 31 million, um, in our fund balance of 12.36%. The Board's heard many times that we are required to show a multi-year projection under Education Code 42131, which shows that we are able to meet our financial obligations, not just this fiscal year, but for the next two additional fiscal years. And you'll see some of the assumptions that we used, um, in determining this. The, the biggest changes in here, um, on our assumption is around our COLA. So for 22-23, COLA has gone up substantially to 5.35. That is a known, um, assumption now, so we have adopted for what we do know and so we are taking that into account in the first interim. We stayed with the three-year trend on our unduplicated count percentage. Again, we have gone down slightly, but that's pretty normal, um, within the county and the state. Our projected enrollment, we have, um, projected about 300 students each year. This year, we did come within, at the end of the October 31st date, we did come within 29 of our projected enrollment, but I will say we are continuing to, um, have students enter our district and so we are up, uh, actually over our projection at the moment. And then we did slightly adjust our ADA, uh, percentage because we have seen that with COVID-related, um, absences, we are a little bit lower than our projection for the budget. There have been no changes to our assumptions under Calsters, Calpers, or our Steppen column. So when you look at our combined multi-year projection, that's, um, the important part for the Board is the bottom line and we are still able to show, um, that we have a 12.36% ending balance this year, 7.97 next year, and a 5.27 even the third year out. Now, remember, we haven't, um, finalized any negotiations and so forth for this year. So anything that we do from now to June 30th would, um, have to be, yeah, would have to be accounted for in those numbers. When you look at our ending balance, um, and we see those percentage, we maintain our revolving cash, um, of about $20,000. We do have Legally Restricted, which is your categorical programs. We are able to meet our 3% designation in all three years and we're able to, um, maintain that additional 2% Board resolution, um, designated for unforeseen circumstances in our multi-year. And again, that's a Board decision that was made, is not a state requirement. So with those, um, with those, uh, percentages, we are still able to maintain a 5% out three years. I do want to point out that ESER III is not within this, um, financial report. We, um, have not yet recognized it as the Board had not approved the plan as of January, uh, I'm sorry, October 31st. We have now done that, um, so those will be reflected in the second interim report. We have now actually received some money from ESER III, so, and we are definitely starting to put the plan in place. In fact, the Board approved the wellness job description this evening, so we will be moving forward with that. The other item that is not in here but is on the Board agenda this evening for, um, approval is the Educator Effectiveness Block Grant, and so, that's about $3.4 million and based on the Board approval this evening, that will be also recognized in the second interim report. So we are required to certify the financial condition of the district. It can be positive, which says that we will meet our financial obligations for the current and the subsequent two fiscal years, qualified, that we may not be able to meet it, or that we have a negative, that we will definitely not be able to meet, it's our financial obligations. And I'm happy to report to the Board and to the community that we are positive, we are able to meet our financial obligations for the current and subsequent two years, and I'm very comfortable in, um, where we're at, uh, based on some of the, um, air, things going around, on around us. So with that, I'm, I want to thank, oh, let's go to the next page first. Just to keep the Board on track of where we are, next slide, please. Joe, can we go to the next slide? Where we are as far as dates, because I think it's important to, um, be in front of the Board often about where, where we are with our budget. Um, our budget was adopted in June, it was revised in August, our unaudited actuals came through in September, we had our 2021 audit in October. Our first interim budget is this evening and hopefully if the Board approves it, it will go to the county and the state. In January, we will be back with our financial audit report for the Board and then the second interim will come in March. We will begin our budget adoption all over again for the 22-23 school year, starting in the start of the, um, January to February. And with that, I do want to thank Mia Cancio and her team for all the hard work. You guys see the end result, but the amount of hours and time that go into this binder of reports that go to the state is, is significant and they do the best job in getting that done. So I would be happy to answer any questions.
Awesome, thank you so much. So just a quick comment and two quick questions. So I just want to underscore what you said, that compared to, you know, some other districts, even in the Bay Area, I am very happy with all the work that you all have put in and we are doing, uh, exceptionally well and, and I think it's just a testament to, you know, this Board as well as this district, um, and I'm, I'm very happy about that. Um, and my questions are really, I'm just curious if you could speak a little bit more to the Structural Deficit Fund, which is page six, by, uh, it's like 5%. I think I understand, but if you could just explain it a little bit more. And then if you could explain a little bit about these projections, because I think we're all so familiar with these projections and with, you know, declining enrollment, but if you could explain what that means a little bit about that being 20, 20 students off.
Sure, so the, um, the structural deficit is when you are spending more money than you're taking in by revenue. And on an ongoing basis, um, this year, much of our money was one-time. So we do have many positions as well as other, um, needs of the district that are being funded this year through one-time money. Those are still needed moving forward. So if we are going to continue those services, we need to put that into, um, our current funding when that one-time goes away. So that's what I look at is the, the structural deficit to make sure that we're not losing sight of those, um, services and needs that we have here in the district, that for the most part, we need to continue. So, um, as the budget comes out in January for next year and as we look at ESER II and some of our other one-time monies that are over, uh, three or four years, um, then there'll be recommendations on how we continue those services with other monies. So that's what the deficit is. The assumption on enrollment, um, we look at a trend here and we had been trending, um, lower in enrollment, which is why we pretty conservatively said 300 this year and we were pretty close. I am seeing that turnaround. We have a lot of building going around, um, if you ever go, have recently gone over the Antioch Bridge, you see all of those, uh, the structures in there going in, it's a lot of apartments and other homes. Some of that is a retirement community, but many of them are family homes. So those students will be, um, those families which have our students will be moving in, um, in the spring and in the next fall is when they're anticipated to be done. So we will look at the trend of enrollment again as we're adopting the budget and see, um, based on what we know, whether or not we should, um, bring that up and down. We are funded however on our average daily attendance. And so when I look at, um, how to project that, we take a three-year trend to see, um, how we're doing and where we are. Um, obviously, we look at any abnormalities such as the pandemic year, um, when we look at that, but that's always on a trend and that's what a projection is. You're looking and doing your best estimate based on what your past has been to determine how you move forward in your budget.
Okay, uh, Trustee Dr. Lewis?
Um, so, you know, thank you for the presentation and thank you for the hard work that was put into this, uh, to this effort. I just had a simple question. So I know the ESER funds has sort of a, a sunset date, is it, I believe it's three years. Is the same thing true for the block grant? Does it have a sunset or is that just the way it's been built up?
So the Effectiveness Block Grant, I believe, is over five years that we'll see later this evening. There were three different ESER, um, funds that came through, all of them have different, um, periods of time and actually, some of them have been extended out since they were originally done. So, um, I could provide in a Friday letter of the Board the kind of dates that go with all of those different funds, but they all vary.
Yeah, but I just, I was just curious, like in general, does the block grant have that sunset? And it sounds like five years.
It's, it can be spent over five years.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, um, I just want to thank you for the, the presentation. I think, um, it's easy sometimes to forget, um, that we are, you know, overall in a pretty good financial situation. I'll talk about it more, but when I was at the CSBA, uh, conference, I spent a good chunk of that weekend talking to other trustees about the fiscal cliff and so it's nice that we don't have to have that discussion here. Um, I do have two questions. Um, one, um, when looking at like our decline in the unduplicated count, um, do we have any, and this is probably a little bit broader, um, any ways that we're trying to address that? And I'm trying to think from my own experiences, um, growing up in this school district and low-income household, still in a low-income household, um, the way that I accessed a lot of resources was that I was on free and reduced lunch and many programs and many, um, resources that exist out there for students have you prove your need and that was the way that, uh, that I was, the box that I was able to check to show my need because my family didn't, um, apply or use any of the other, you know, state or federal resources that we, we very well qualified for, but that was just not the way that we functioned in our household and, and it was a much easier to, to sign up for free and reduced lunch than it was to go to some of these other programs. I'm wondering if...
Yeah, and there's been some changes that, um, have added to the, um, way that this has been done. So months, some of our schools are school-wide, so we don't need to collect the data. When school lunches became, um, the share that all students qualify, some of the parents do not fill out the form, um, because it's really not required. So there is an alternative that we have been using and we are reaching out to parents because there are other things besides lunch that they qualify for and you need to make sure that they know that. So our sites are doing that as well as our, um, Food Services Department and Mr. Cannon helping with that as well.
Very cool.
Wishful thinking. You know, at some point, uh, and, you know, in my sort of day life, um, my day job, I won't mention what for a number of reasons, but there are a number of services that are available in the community that are designed to support the needs of those who need them, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
But, but the recipient never get to them. So is there a way, and again, this is wishful thinking, maybe in the next calendar year or, you know, at some point, maybe we hold a resource fair on campus or one of our campuses or with the district or something. So that way we can at least expose people to the resources that are available. I think, you know, if I had a, my wishlist, that would be definitely something that's on it. And I think that that's something that could really engage parents and create an environment where they see the school district as sort of a partner in whatever they're, they're experiencing. So, just wishlist.
Um, Madam Chair?
Uh, Trustee Rocha?
I was amazed because on a number, uh, you know, consent items, I, Title I, if you remember, if you looked at it, I couldn't believe the amount of, schools now have changed and now we have, um, 19 we had and six more, we have 25 schools that are Title I now. That shows you what we are in the areas that we're in and the needs. And so we qualify, um, it's more of our schools that are qualifying. I think there's just very few that don't fit the Title I. I mean, I know, the reasons, issues of resources are very important. A lot of our schools already ha, are helping.
Mm-hmm.
But I agree with you, I mean, something like that would be very helpful to families.
And I don't, and I do want to underscore that I think the stu, the, the schools are doing great, but again, if the, if awareness around what resources, resources are available aren't shared, you know, sometimes we may miss the ball. Um, and I, that's not a school district thing, I think that's a county as well as a state deal as well, so, but a wishlist, some sort of resource fair, so that way we can roll it out to the parents. Parents can then understand what resources are available and tap into those, so.
I do have, yeah, one more question, um, because I'm wondering, um, you know, one of the, the sessions that I went to at the CSBA session was on some of the, uh, budgeting and best practices and one of the things that, that, you know, is always an option to us is a third interim report and I'm, I'm wondering if you have thoughts on, you know, when we've done that, if that's something that we do or why, and why we don't.
Well, a third interim is required if you're qualified or negative and we don't fit that. Um, if there's substantial changes, I would always recommend that. Um, otherwise, we could always do, you know, an update without doing the entire third interim that requires all the forms and so forth to the state. So, um, having more opportunities, but it's when there's really substantial changes that I think the Board needs to be aware of and I would bring it to you in one fashion or another.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I would entertain a motion on this item.
All motion to approve, uh, to approve the first interim report.
Motion made by Trustee Hernandez, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Rocha. If there are no other questions, if Ms. Cavallaro could call our roll.
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the first interim budget report passes five zero.
Thank you. Uh, so moving on, we have item F, which is our... Thank you. So moving on, we have item F, which is our CSEA salary schedule. So I believe that would be.
I think we're on E.
Yeah.
E, just kidding, I skipped right over it. E, which is our 2021-22 School Plan for Student Achievement, our SPSA. So this would be Associate Superintendent Navarro.
Yes. So this evening, we have our school plans for student achievement for our schools that receive state and federal categorical funds. And those, this is to incorporate into their plans, the carryover money that they receive from Title I. And so those schools that are here, that are listed this evening, have done that and have held their school site council meetings to incorporate those additional carryover funds. There were a few schools that weren't able to have their school site council meetings in time to submit for this board meeting, so they'll come at a future meeting.
So I have no questions, but just a shameless plug, as I do very often, for school site councils. If you are even the least bit interested in the way the decisions are made at your school site, whether or not you have a kid that goes there or not, community members can join the school site council. And it is really a great opportunity to, when you look at, okay, there's a little bit of carryover, where do we want to invest our dollars for our kids at a particular school? And so even if you don't understand what a school site council is, just ask principal or somebody at the school. And it sounds more complicated than it really is. So definitely join your school site councils. So are there any questions on the SPSA? So it sounds like we'll see some more probably in January for the folks who didn't meet with their school site council in time to approve it. So this isn't the full list, but any questions?
I do have a question.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, because I see in a lot of, in all of these, right, they have a baseline and an expected outcomes for a lot of their measurable outcomes. Is there a place where we come back to these and actually then look at what the actual outcomes were and compare that? And even look at like trend data? I don't know, just some of these, you know, it felt like it'd be a little bit more useful if we had, you know, you know, like a run chart or something that looks at even like previous years and things in this context.
Yeah, there's an annual review process. And when they adopt their next school site, school plan for student achievement, this is, this one is just purely an update to incorporate the carryover funds that they receive through Title I.
And that, that review is on a site level, not on a board level, correct?
Correct. But they are reviewed by district staff.
Got it.
And I think it's important, I always remind the board, because there was some confusion in years past, that the board's role in the school site approval is simply to attest that they're not supplanting, using their federal funding to provide a service that the district is giving non-Titel I schools, for example.
Yeah. And one way to do that is to look at the minutes, right? So the minutes are included in this. And so just to make sure that everybody signed, you know, that everybody was there, the minutes were, you know, taken, attached, and stuff like that. So thank you for that, Superintendent Navarro. I think that's an important distinction. So is there, I would entertain a motion?
I move approval.
Moved by trustee Rocha. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by trustee Dr. Lewis. Ms. Cavallaro, can you call the roll to approve the item E?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve school plans for student achievement for sites in receipt of federal categorical funding passes 5-0.
All right. Now we're moving on to the CSEA salary schedule. So Deputy Superintendent Romeo.
Yes. Beginning in January of 2022, the state minimum wage is increased to $15 per hour for employees with, our employers with more than 25 employees. That includes us. We are still in negotiations with CSEA, but we do need to be in compliance. We have two cells on our salary schedule for our student monitors that fall slightly below the $15. So this schedule would bring them up to $15 per hour to comply with the law as we continue negotiations with our CSEA bargaining unit. So I would ask the board to approve the salary schedule.
Seems pretty straightforward, just getting us up to the $15 minimum wage. If there, if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item F.
Motion made by trustee Hernandez, seconded by trustee Dr. Lewis. Ms. Cavallaro, could you call the roll?
Yes, trustee Hack?
Absolutely.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the CSEA salary schedule passes 5-0.
All right. Moving on to our educator effectiveness block grant. So I believe this is going to be Deputy or Associate Superintendent?
I will get started on it. And if there's some questions that go into Ed Services, Ms. Navarro will be present as well. At the last board meeting, we did present to the board a plan for the use of the effectiveness, educator effectiveness block grant. And this is primarily for professional development for our teachers, our classroom aides that are in the classroom, as well as some of the support services. So a plan was presented to the board, having heard no change to the plan as presented. It is back in front of the board this evening for approval.
And we do have a public comment. So, sorry, was that it? Deputy Superintendent Romeo?
Yes.
So I will move to public comment, and we have Amanda Frias.
Good evening. Sorry, I know I'm a little late to the party with this because you presented at the last board meeting, which I wasn't able to attend. I just happened to see this in the agenda for tonight, and I was thinking, yes, our district, we're getting some money for professional development. And then I looked at how we're allocating the funds. And to say I was highly disappointed would be an understatement. I could tell you, in my last eight years in the district, I have received zero professional development that has had any meaningful impact to my instruction for my students. Many of the professional developments we get are presented by other educators, which I understand can be useful, but to be the bulk of our professional development, I don't find it useful. I would say many of the educators in this district leave our professional developments feeling like we have wasted a complete day. I was flabbergasted to see that we are spending $2.8 million of this money for standards-based learning. We began that journey, I believe, four years ago. Sorry, sometimes my years run together. And the rollout of it has been not great. And unfortunately, the way you roll out a program really sets the tone. And there are many teachers in the district that are not on board with standards-based learning. I started in that very first training, and it seemed to me that it was supposed to get us all onto the same page. We're all grading our standards the same way. It's supposed to make it so the way that, you know, teacher A and teacher B, it doesn't matter which teacher you have, the outcome is the same. And unfortunately, you left that to us who attended that training to then deploy that to the rest of the staff. And it didn't roll out to each school the same way. So some schools are really feeling great with the standards-based learning. Some feel like they have no idea what it is. And I just feel, I don't know, I just feel like there are many other programs that we can do that would actually have a meaningful impact to teaching our students. Many of our students struggle with reading, and we don't get any real professional development in that. I see many states where every teacher in the state gets what's called letters training, which stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. Training like that, I feel, would be a lot more useful than the standards-based learning. Sorry, I'm, usually my comments, I write them out. I'm kind of flying by the seat of my pants tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. So question kind of in relation to that, we did a survey for this, or didn't we do, send a survey out to parents and teachers, or was that for different one-time monies?
We used it for a couple of, because they're coming in at the same time. It would be silly to repeat the same survey for a different separate pot of money.
And then also too, I mean, I think just to also maybe add a little bit more nuance to this, it's not to say that what's in this budget is the only professional development that these teachers are getting, right? Or that our staff are getting. This is just as it relates to this block grant.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions from folks about this? If there are no questions, I'd also entertain a motion.
I move approval.
Moved by trustee Rocha to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Hack. Ms. Cavallaro, can you call the roll?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the educator effectiveness block grant passes 5-0.
Thank you. Moving on to item H, agreement between New York University Steinhardt School of Culture, Education, and Human Development and Antioch Unified School District. So Deputy Superintendent Romeo.
Yes, this contract is to bring forward similar, like we do with our student teachers, for a counseling to work under the, with the assistance of one of our counselors to help her complete her program. And oftentimes, when they do their student teaching or their internship with us, they'd like to come on board with us. And we are definitely in need of counselors, psychologists, so we always offer, are happy to bring in interns in this area. So I would ask the board to approve it.
I'm really glad that they wanted to come here. So if there are no questions, I'd also entertain a motion on item H.
I will make that motion. I'll second.
Motion made by trustee Dr. Lewis, seconded by trustee Hernandez to approve item H. Ms. Cavallaro, could you call the roll?
Yes. Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee, or President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the agreement between New York University Steinhardt School of Culture, Education, and Human Department and the Antioch Unified School District passes 5-0.
Moving on, item I is agreement with Public Health Institute.
Yes. Before you this evening, we're very pleased to announce that we were chosen to, as one of the partners for the Public Health Institute. As you may be aware, COVID and contact tracing has been very time-consuming on staff and taking them away from essential duties. But through grants, Public Health Institute is now going to take that off of our plates. So they will be the ones doing the contact tracing and giving parents and families the information needed for isolation and quarantine. So I would ask the board to approve this this evening.
Are there any questions on this?
Seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, seems straightforward to me as well. So this is great, actually, opportunity for us. So is there a motion on this?
I'd like to motion to approve item I, agreement with Public Health Institute.
Motion made by trustee Hernandez. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Rocha. Ms. Cavallaro, can you call the roll?
Yes. Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the agreement with Public Health Institute passes 5-0.
Wonderful. So moving on to the item J, which is master contract with specialized education services incorporated DBA Sierra Schools to provide non-public special education services at Kimball, Diablo Vista, Fremont, and Eminem Grant for the 21-22 school year.
So this has come before the board before, but at the board's request, contracts over a certain amount are put as an action item. So that's why this here, this evening.
Okay. So thank you for that as well. So are there any questions about this? We've worked with them before.
Madam Chair, I move approval.
Motion made by trustee Rocha to approve this contract. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Dr. Lewis. Ms. Cavallaro, can you call the roll?
Yes. Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion passes 5-0. And I apologize, we're having a little bit of problem with our scoreboard right now.
Oh.
It seems to be, I may be having an internet issue.
Yeah, my internet's not working.
Do you want us to wait, or is it, is it okay?
Is our audio still working and our recording? So it's in the public record? Joe? Okay. So I think we're good.
If it's okay with everyone, we can continue by hand. And I can add in the motions later.
I'm okay with that. Just let us know if you need us to slow down or anything, because we're kind of going through these.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So moving on to item K, which is service agreement with Sunbelt Staffing. So Deputy Superintendent Romeo?
Sure. This is a new vendor, which is why it is not on the consent calendar. We are still having a shortage of psychologists. And so we are contracting for two additional school psychologists. We do have some retirements coming up on December 17th, Friday. So I would ask the board to approve this contract.
Any questions about this? Is there a motion on item K?
I move approval.
Motion made by trustee Rocha to approve this contract?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Dr. Lewis. And whenever you're ready, Ms. Cavallaro. Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the services agreement with Sunbelt Staffing passes 5-0.
Wonderful. So last one on our action items is letter L, service agreement with Timothy M. Smith.
We are asking the board this evening to approve, this is a new vendor, which is why it's before you. And this is a conductor who will be providing professional development for our music teachers on January 5th, and then also providing some services in February. So we ask that the board approve this agreement.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Motion made by trustee Rocha to approve this services agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, seconded by trustee Hack. So motion made by trustee Rocha, seconded by trustee Hack. Ms. Cavallaro, call the roll.
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to pass the services agreement with Timothy M. Smith passes 5-0.
Wonderful. All right. So moving on to section 12, items for information, discussion, or action by the board. Letter A is our CSBA delegate assembly nomination, and that was trustee Rocha. So I'll pass it over to trustee Rocha.
I've had my opportunity to be on the CSBA for the last couple of years. I would like to continue. I find it fascinating and interesting, and I've had a great opportunity to be this year as a conference member, convention member. And I've been also ability to select some of the, be the deciding vote on the delegate, delegates that were in dispute or whatever. You want to call it, so I've been called into that committee. So I'm really enjoying it. This conference was excellent, and I'm hoping that we might consider in the future some of that information that's coming to both of us, because both of us attended, Ms. Antonio Hernandez and myself, trustee. And so I'm just asking for your support because I can't go on, this is not, you still have an opportunity to vote. It's just like anything else. You put the name on, and if it's accepted, it comes back. And then you have a listing of so many delegates from this region, Region 7, to select. And the last time, if you remember, there was, I think, three out of four. And you all had an opportunity to select who it was. In fact, I believe our chair was in support of trustee, I think, I can't, I don't know that I can pronounce it correct. I think it's Lee from Brenwood, and she was excellent member, and she was there at the delegate assembly.
So what is your ask tonight? I'm sorry.
I was going to ask the same thing.
So I'm asking for support. I need to be selected by this board to be put, it's a nomination. And so then if you accept it, accept me as the nominee, then I'd be put on the list, and it comes back for selection in March, I believe.
So then the motion would be to nominate you?
Correct.
Okay. So is there any questions?
Yeah, I just want to make kind of a comment, because I did attend the CSBA conference with trustee Rocha. And she attended the delegate piece, which made her week even longer, and she spent a lot more time giving back to this conference. And just want to say that it was a really great conference, and it was really awesome, you know, being there during these big general sessions. And they, you know, honored trustee Rocha, they said her name for helping plan and put together a conference. I thought a lot of the speakers and a lot of the things that were going on there were very cool. So I'm definitely in support if this is an experience that trustee Rocha has enjoyed. I think it was really great, and would love to see that continue. I think it was really great and would love to see that continue.
Thank you. And I'm definitely in support as well. I think that anything that we could do as board members to get what's going on in AUSD out there is a good thing. I mean, we're clearly making some really good, sound decisions. So as much as we can kind of elevate that and reshape the narrative, I'm all for it.
Thank you.
So is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to support trustee Rocha, the CSBA delegate assembly nomination.
Wonderful, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded, so the motion was made by trustee Hernandez, seconded by trustee Dr. Lewis, to nominate trustee Rocha to the CSBA delegate assembly. And so if there are no other questions, I would ask Ms. Cavallaro to call the roll.
Trustee Hack?
Absolutely.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Of course, yes.
The motion to approve the nomination of trustee Rocha for the CSBA delegate assembly passes five zero.
Thank you.
Wonderful, and then next step is January then, right?
Right.
So wonderful. Okay, so moving on, mental health programs, also trustee Rocha.
I brought it up, because if you remember, I was asking, we're having so many of these programs, especially for mental health. I'd like to see somehow how we're doing and what schools have what and how soon are we going to get to the ability to have the rooms set up for mental health? Because I did go to one, a couple of the schools, some are in and some are not, they're working on it. So that was my request and I'm not sure how.
So would you like that in the Friday board?
I think so. If you could give me the schools and the programs that are in mental health, or how should I say it?
I, I think.
You know what I'm trying to say? Mental programs that support students, especially at this time. And every school has a different way of doing it. And so I, for me, I need to have a listing on where these programs are, so I'll know who's got what and how, which one is working better than the other ones.
I would really like that, too.
So trustee Rocha, you know, I'm in full support of that. I have a question, and again, sort of, tonight, there are a lot of wishes that I'm going to put out in the universe. Is there a way for us to put that information on the district website?
Well, we're currently working on fingertip facts, for lack of a better word, for each school. And I think that would be the perfect place to put them. But in the interim, we can definitely provide something in the Friday board. But that would be available to all parents, the fingertip facts.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, I think that's important, because when there, when there are questions that come up, and they do, around what are we doing to support specific populations, it's important for us to be able to, I think trustee Rocha said before, like maybe a fat card or something like that. But also, let's say, you know, we can point them to the district website to say, okay, well, these are the services that we provide for this population, and this is the way we're supporting them. These are the, these are the programs and all those things. I mean, obviously, that will probably introduce more questions. However, we can have that as a start point.
And in an ideal world, how I see this, since we're wishing, I would see after we've developed that, that we have hyperlinks. So we can go to the fingertip packs and get a hyperlink to, which will tell you about the specific program.
Yes.
Oh, that'd be good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm in full support of that as well. So it seems like we have our consensus, but I want to make sure we.
Yeah, I mean, if we're jumping in and sharing wishes, I feel I might as well share mine. Because it's sounding, and we've been having this conversation, I think it's something that I've only begun to think about, that if different school sites have different ways of doing mental health and that we care about this, then we should think about putting this into a larger district strategic plan, so that we kind of have a direction of where we see mental health heading in this district. And that's, again, still honoring that different districts, different sites have different needs and giving them that autonomy as well, but also like providing a direction of where we should be heading as far as mental health goes. And I think given the pandemic and the way that some of these discussions be going, that might be a, you know, big wish that I got.
The other point is that because we're receiving the money on a one-time basis, we need to know which ones do work, so if we have to come up with the money to continue, we have to consider that.
And also, if we find that programs are working, we can scale. Right? So, you know, I think that gives us a lot of flexibility in terms of supporting our students.
I think Friday board, that would be a great starting point.
Yeah.
Start with Friday board and then kind of continue to move from there. So that sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, wonderful. And then the next one is Superintendent Ano. So it's resolution in support of Assembly Bill 75, which is the Kindergarten to Community College Public Education Facilities Bond Act, not really a short name, of 2022, Superintendent Ano.
Yes, so I was approached by former state superintendent Tom Torleksen, and he is asking that I bring this before the board. As you know, California schools, many were built around the same era and many are in disrepair, given that there's not a separate facility fund any longer. And so he is asking that the board show their support for the state going out for a bond in 2022. So I brought it here to hear if that's something that this board would like to do. You can take action tonight if you'd like.
Yeah, I would really like to do it. I looked into this and I'm glad that it's before us this evening. And so I would be willing to take action on the resolution tonight, just to get our name out there. But what do other, what do my colleagues think about that?
I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, so trustee Rocha and I are in favor of voting on this resolution tonight. Is there any other?
Yeah, I'd like for us to go ahead and vote on this tonight. I think that makes sense, I think. You know, our schools do need additional funding.
You sure do.
Trustee Dr. Lewis or trustee Hack, any major?
Let's go for it.
Are we, can we approve the resolution of support tonight?
Yes, you can, because it's under action by the board.
Perfect.
Information discussion.
Sweet. Is there a motion to adopt?
I move approval, ma'am.
Motion made by trustee Rocha. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Hernandez to adopt this resolution in support of AB 75. So Ms. Cavallaro? Oh, we got, are we back up?
Yes, we're back up.
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the resolution supporting Assembly Bill 75 passes five zero.
Wonderful. So next item is my item, which is Family Scouts, which is sponsored by Girl Scouts of America. So this was an organization that approached me just to basically, and teach me a little bit more about what Family Scouts is. And so I actually included the FAQ that they, that they had sent me. And so basically, it's, I think it's really cool, it sounds really neat. It's a much more inclusive, much more, you know, kind of diversity oriented kind of activity within kind of the scouts that isn't just for girls. So, you know, you can have a daughter who's in the Girl Scouts or wants to be a Girl Scout, but maybe you have a daughter and a son. So Family Scouts would kind of be more for you. And the reason I brought this to us all is because this organization is working with other charter schools in the area and other districts in our area. And so if this sounds like something that is even remotely interesting, I was thinking that perhaps we could give direction to maybe look into this a little bit more, see what a partnership looks like. I know that we've had partnerships with the Boy Scouts in the past. I don't know if we've had them with Girl Scouts. I know individual schools have. But yeah, just looking to see if there's partnership opportunities there. And I don't think that there has to be, I didn't anticipate any like actual, you know, motions or action, but just rather like if this is something that's.
I'd like to see some information, in terms of written information that gives us flavor of what it is.
And that's kind of what I was thinking, I was almost, because what, with trustee Dr. Lewis had brought up the ROTC, and I thought that, at least from my perspective, I liked how that process rolled out, with he brought it as an item for information. We directed staff and we kind of rolled it out in that way. So I was kind of envisioning this going in that same route of like, yeah, let's just get some more information and see if we can direct staff to, you know, provide us some information in Friday board and then just kind of move from there.
Information's always wonderful. Once we get down, we can make the decisions.
So I think, please.
No, I'd be happy to reach out to them, or have staff, sorry, reach out to them. Because one of the things we would need to do is have them go for RFQ process, only because it would be an ongoing services to students. So we'd make sure, let them know how to do that, or if they just want to go through the flyer approval, kind of find out what they're looking for in a partnership. If that's, I would be more than willing to.
And I'm all for creating opportunities for leadership for our kiddos. That's at the center of everything that I do and everything I believe, so.
I mean, and a whole family unit can be involved. I mean, I just.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
It talks about volunteers, including males, help with meetings, events, special celebration with little as much as they like. And you can be a volunteer of 18 years and older. So I think I hear, I'd like to hear more about it.
Yeah, and so I think it's really, yeah, like what does partnership look like to Family Scouts? And then we can kind of just discuss it from there.
And also, you know, I'd be really interested to hear the sort of vetting criteria. So when the information is received, what the vetting criteria is for volunteers, in terms of, you know, they're engaging with our young folks. So we want to make sure that there's some level of background check there.
Absolutely. I need to, is it separate than the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts? Is it independently of them?
So my understanding is that it is actually a Girl Scouts of America, you know, kind of troop, or it's couched within that. So it's actually overseen by, it's technically a part of Girl Scouts of America. But it's, and that's what was so interesting to me, is it's very much, I think, taking into account, you know, just the diversity of East County, you know? We have different, different family structures. So my understanding is like some, you know, you might have your little girl and her boy cousin, they could both be involved in Family Scouts together. So it's just really trying to be literally more inclusive.
And more of a family event than it is for individuals.
Yeah.
Instead of just that one child going into the Scouts, it's a family going into the Scouts.
And it's the, and it takes away from like the gender. So you know, there's non-binary little kids, where are they supposed to go, right? And so this seems like that.
Good point, I'd like to hear more about it.
The starting point for the district has to be to get some information about what this facility, this group, the organization is all about. It's a starting point.
Exactly.
Do you need action on this?
I don't, I don't think so.
It's just point of information.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wonderful. Okay, great. All right, moving on. So section 13, resolutions for first reading, we don't have any. We do have some resolutions for immediate action, which is section 14. Resolution A, which is resolution number 21, 22, 24, approval of destruction of records. So pretty standard.
This is very standard. The law sets our retention time for all of our records. And the ones in front of you are those that are due to be destroyed. And so we would ask the board to approve.
Make a motion.
I, I, go ahead.
Motion was, I heard trustee Rocha first, so is that a second?
Doesn't matter.
Trustee Hack is second. Ms. Cavallaro, can you call the roll?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to adopt resolution 2021-22-24, approving the destruction of records, passes five zero.
Wonderful. And another, resolution, letter B, same thing, we have seen this before, authorizing instructors to teach outside of credential authorizations.
I'm going to say the same thing I say every time this comes up, that this is credentialing to teach outside of credential, but it's a closely related field.
It's closely related, although the one, one of them tonight is a teacher on special assignment and under some new rules, you now have to do a, teach outside, although they're not actually teaching a class with students. But we follow the rules.
Right. So public consumption, it's a closely related field. It's not like I have a degree in philosophy and I'm teaching chemistry.
Yeah, it's like I have a degree in philosophy and I'm teaching the, you know.
History.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So is there a motion?
I think he gave one.
Yeah, I gave him a motion.
Okay, so motion made by trustee Dr. Lewis, seconded by trustee Rocha to approve resolution 2021, 22, 22. So Ms. Cavallaro, can you call the roll?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to adopt resolution 2021-22-22, authorizing instructors to teach outside of credential authorization, passes five zero.
Thank you. So moving on to our board policy, or sorry, section 15, which is resolutions for second reading and action, we don't have any. Section 16, board policies for first reading. So first up, we have revised board policy 5131.2 on bullying. So Superintendent Ano, perhaps?
I believe this is Ms. Abara.
Associate Superintendent Abara.
So this policy, of course, is just for first read. And it is, it updates, of course, to law. And in this one in particular, it is allowing for victims of bullying to have the opportunity or option to transfer out of the school. And if another school is not available, then they can transfer out of district.
Correct.
So there's no action on this, right? It's just for our first read and if we have any questions?
Yes.
So is there, you know, questions, any edits? And there's no public comments, so I will move on then to the second board policy for first read, which is revised board policy 5145.11, which is questioning and apprehension by law enforcement.
And again, oh, go ahead.
Please.
This is, again, it's an update to the law. And so there have been laws that have changed specifically for students that are 15 and younger, in terms of the law enforcement being able or not being able to interrogate them without the parent.
So I did have a question around, sort of midway through the first, or towards the end, the latter half of the first page, where it says effective January 1, a California minor age 15 or under must consult with an attorney. So a couple of questions, and I think trustee, this came up in the school city, or similar conversation came up in the school city meeting as well.
The rules have changed.
The rules have changed. So if it's 15 now, where, 15 and under, so if a child is 16 and above, that means law enforcement can consult?
That's how, that's how we've understood it, yes. We've pulled, we've extracted this directly from the law. We've pulled, we've extracted this directly from the law. And so the, the piece that you see there in red is from that.
And then secondarily, is this only on site or is this between site and home? I'm sorry, between school site and home? So for example, if a fight happens, you know, at Burger King, you know, on the way to home from Deer Valley, and law enforcement shows up, can they ask questions? Well, maybe Dallas Ranch, say, and it happens at Rite Aid, because that's, seems to be a hotspot. And the law enforcement shows up, do, do those same rules apply? Because they're not on campus?
I believe that those apply regardless, because I think the rules are for the, the student, not irregardless of where they are, but certainly on our school campus.
Okay.
My question, and this might be something we need to research a little bit, but could we, as a board, say that we want this to be minors under the age of eighteen? Like could, do we have the right to make this more, more, I don't want to say stringent, but to include this, the sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen-year-olds?
I don't believe we can go counter to the law or prevent law enforcement from doing their job, whether or not it's on our campus.
And so the other question I have is, can we just change the he slash she to they? I think it's kind of just antiquated to constantly gender things and it just reads weird.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that.
And that's just something I hope that we can do, you know, as we come across these board policies. I just think it's, it's just silly to do in this day and age, so. Are there any other questions with this? Okay. So, yep, that's the only thing. So then for the second read, then the only change we'll probably see is just the taking he slash she away and just making it a gender neutral term. Okay, wonderful. Thank you for that. So next up, we have our Board Policies for Second Reading and Action, we don't have any. We do have a couple informational items for general information this evening. The first one is New Administrative Regulation five-one-three-one point four-one, which is use of seclusion and restraint. So is this, uh, Associate Superintendent Navarro?
It's just, it's for information, it's because it's an AR, and it just talks about the updates with regards to restraints. They're, they're pretty much written there for you.
Thank you. Any questions on this? Seems pretty straightforward.
Are we able to have edits on, because there, there is also a bit of his, her, he, she gendered language and formatting on there. Is that something that can also be changed up?
We can make that change.
Awesome.
That's easy to do.
Thank you.
And, I don't know, I mean, I, reading this and sort of, and it's not, I know it's not us, but just thinking about how this could play out. And if I read this, districts, wait, behavioral restraint, so a behavioral restraint could be in response to a number of different things. So technically, if a child is sent home from suspension or at home by themselves, to some degree, that could be considered a behavioral restraint. So I just wonder, how, are we putting ourselves in a position, and I, and I know this is above, you know, not necessarily written by AUSD, but are we putting ourselves in a position to, to come back and regret this language, if you will? Because I read it a couple of times and that was a couple of my thoughts specifically for AUSD, because a large percentage, a large percentage of our kids are lucky. So we have a lot of students who, if they were suspended, would be home by themselves. So to some degree, that would reinforce what we're trying to prevent here.
I believe that ed code and the law have outlined definitions of restraint and the temporary alternate, I think, temporary alternative placement, such as go to another classroom, have a timeout, basically, would not be considered restraint.
Okay.
There's a definition around it, and if you'd like, we can, we can provide that.
I just wanted to highlight that, because I read it a couple of times and, you know, I'm thinking detention or, you know, some of those, some of those traditional, or calming room, or wellness room, some of those things could be considered.
What section were you looking at specifically that gave you pause?
Paragraph two under definitions, I'm sorry, paragraph one, behavioral restraint includes mechanical restraints or physical restraint used to, using intervention when a student presents immediate danger to self or others. Yeah.
I would find it helpful to have that in a Friday board update, though, the definitions, if that's not, I mean, just to see what the ed code definitions are of the behavioral restraint. It's, it's just helpful in terms of keeping track of things in my notes, because I could obviously Google it right now, but if it comes in a Friday board.
And then also the section on seclusion right before prohibitions.
You could actually provide the whole ed code.
Yeah, just, yeah.
And I think that, that kind of lays it out and makes it more digestible.
Any other questions on this? Is there one other person who is okay with that? Okay, so we have a, okay, wonderful. So moving on, Williams Visit Report, this is very standard, Associate Superintendent Navarro, I don't know if you want to say anything about that?
Just that the county comes every year, those are the schools listed there that they visited and that all schools were found compliant. So this is the report that the county provided.
All right. I don't see any questions, so, and, you know, just as a reminder, Item C was pulled because our bond folks were not able to make it this evening, but hopefully we'll be able to see them in January. And so moving on to Item nineteen, so future agenda items from board members. So I have a couple items, but is there other items?
Can I get one, just, I just want to remind the board, when you say your item, not to tell your opinion, because then we're deliberating without the public knowing. Just a reminder, it's a good one.
Thank you.
Need to start at the?
Yeah, Trustee Dr. Lewis.
So Trustee Hernandez and I have, over the last year, been discussing the idea and creation of sort of a student representative or given student voice. And, you know, we, we've had a lot of conversation, had some frameworks, but with all things, you know, they come and they sound great initially, but over the course of the, the conference this, the last couple of weeks, there is an existing framework that mirrors what we were discussing. So we would like to put that on the board. Jenny, you think the next one, we can have conversation?
So what, what the title of that be? Or you could send language as well later on?
Framework for Student Representatives?
Framework for Student Representatives.
There we go.
I'd say board member, just to be a little bit more.
I'll do a slash. How's that?
Sure.
So the initial discussion.
Initial discussion, yes.
Other, anything else, Trustee Doctor, Trustee Rocha?
Thank you. Yes, you know, in the conference, they talked about, and also our Superintendent of the State of California is really into it, and Richmond was into it, talking about third grade, that by third grade, people, kids should be reading. And I was talking to my superintendent here, and it seems to me that that goal's already here, things have already been done, and I guess, I don't remember, it might have been before my time. But she, they said it was already down as a requirement in this district to get them to reading by third. So I was asking, well, what have we done? You know, how have we done it and who has done it? And are we succeeding? So that was my question.
So report on third grade reading efforts.
Exactly. Thank you.
And are we saying reading at a third grade level or?
Yes, reading at a third grade level.
All right, and then, so I, future items, revisit the mission slash vision update conversation. Revisit, and I feel like this is kind of related, but revisit governance training? I kind of feel like those are.
We're getting it, are we? I mean, we have that coming up. Excuse me, I'm sorry. We'll talk about it.
So revisit governance training. How about revisit governance training slash mission and vision? So that way, it's all kind of just in one. And then a professional development audit.
I'll touch base with now President Hack and kind of share some of my future agenda items after I think we touch base would be better.
Trustee Dr. Lewis?
All right, Trustee Hack can go first and I'll just.
Trustee Hack?
So, you know, one of the things that, you know, I'm, to the, to the incoming administration and Superintendent, one of the things.
Wait, 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 sorry, Trustee Dr. Lewis, could this wait until comments from board members? Because we're still in the addition, uh, sorry, we're still in the items.
Yeah, it falls into item for.
Oh, for future agenda item.
For future agenda.
Okay, sorry, continue.
So, you know, I think we, so, and this is not necessarily just for AUSD. I think school boards in general and education, educators in general, do a phenomenal job of responding to what's right in front of us. However, with systems as large and the systems as complex as education and the, and sort of the nuance and sort of the levels that we touch, sometimes it's, it's effective to develop a multi-year plan. And I think that that's something that, if possible, you know, obviously, there's financial and budgetary restraints. But if possible, if we can create a, a multi-year vision in terms of like what it is we want to, where we want to be in year, you know, three, four, whatever that number is, and then we can start to build backwards supports on how to, how to build towards that, that vision. Am I making sense?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it makes sense in my head.
Strategic planning, vision planning.
Multi-year strategic planning, yes.
Okay, perfect.
All right. So moving on to Section twenty, Additional Comments, which exceeded the first thirty-minute session. We didn't exceed, but did we get additional public comment, Ms. Cavallaro? Okay. So then let's move on to reports and comments from board members. So why don't we start off with, I'll just go down the line, so Trustee Hack, reports and comments for this evening.
Board comments. You know, I just have something I want to read. So it's something, it's called After COVID-nineteen. It's by a guy named Laura Manucci.
Wait, can you turn the, turn your mic towards you just a?
Yeah, okay. So just, just to read this, just because I think it's, makes sense at this moment in time. As we soon end this calendar year, I'd like to share some thoughts with you, this is Laura's thoughts, which I think may well be appropriate for us to contemplate as we continue to go forward into the two thousand twenty-two school year. Reflection makes sense to me at this time. And it says this, when this is over, may we never again take for granted a handshake with a stranger, full shelves at the store, conversations with friends and neighbors, kids being in the classroom, a crowded theater, a school rush each morning, Friday night out, a routine, a routine checkup, the sounds of a crowded playground, coffee with a friend, each deep breath, the stadium roaring on a Friday night, a boring Wednesday, and life itself. When this ends, may we find that we have become more like a child, like the people we want to be, like we were called to be, like we hope to be. And may we stay that way better for each other because of the worst. We've gone through a year and a half. Hopefully, we're at that point now.
Was that from the perspective from KQED?
Nah, I don't work on it.
No, there's, there's a section on KQED, it's called With a Perspective.
I don't work on it.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, I have a few comments I wanted to share, and I've already shared a good chunk, about the CSBA conference that I was able to attend at the beginning of December, along with Trustee Rocha, and how great it was to be in San Diego, getting to interact with other board members and seeing the challenges that are going on across school districts and that, in many ways, the challenges that we're facing here are very similar to the challenges that other districts are facing. I know that sometimes our challenges can seem very unique to us, but it is, the issues that we're facing are issues that school districts all over are facing. It was a really great conference, there was definitely a ton to learn. I thought there was a lot of really great sessions, including, you know, some governance training. I went to a session that looked specifically, as Trustee Lewis mentioned, about a student board member program that's very similar to what we're hoping to put together. And I got to, you know, connect with the superintendent and the trustees there and see some of the successes in that program. And more importantly, I got to talk to some of those students that were serving in that student board member position, and it was really great to see some of those perspectives. I think probably the highlight for me was the keynote speaker that was chosen, and I thank Trustee Rocha for helping make this decision, Dr. Victor Rios, who's a professor of sociology at UC Santa Barbara, who came from a very challenging background in Oakland and now does a lot to support students and share how we can best, you know, elevate these students. And one of the things that I hadn't thought about is, is in the language that we sometimes use. One of the big things that he helped pass in the state legislature was changing the use of the term at risk to at promise for students that are facing challenges. And I think, you know, getting to talk to him was a really great time. He has relatives that are here in Antioch, so it's great to be able to talk to him and kind of reminisce and, and talk about some of those pieces with him. The other two last comments that I have is, you know, do you want to wish everyone a happy holiday as we're facing now, this is our last board meeting for the year? And one of the things that I did recently with some classmates is really shared some stories about what's been uplifting us lately. And so I kind of wanted to share a story that's really put a lot of inspiration in me and really like, got me back into gear, because I think it's very often to lose sight about the way that we can really impact people. Many people know that for a number of years prior to my time on the board, I served as a leadership instructor for high school students. And over the years, I've worked with a number of students. And, you know, there's a number of students that I'm lucky to keep in touch with. And one student in particular that, that we've continued to stay in touch, who showed just tremendous growth over the time that I worked with him, and has continued to just go above and beyond anything that I ever could have taught them. Recently reached out to me, they're currently a student at a very great university here in California, you know, hoping to become a physician, and they're continuing that pathway. And one of the things in Filipino culture is they do something called the debut, which is, you know, to put in my terms, is something that, that's very similar to a kinsanera, it's a coming-of-age type of ceremony that typically happens at eighteen versus the fifteen that a kinsanera happens at. And one of the pieces of this ceremony is that they choose a number of male figures in their life that made a significant impact on them. And it was just such a great honor to get this long heartfelt message from this student, inviting me to be one of those people that's coming to them. They're having their, the ceremony in Reno, and their family's flying me out, and they're, you know, having me stay with them and all this stuff. And it's really, you know, something that I didn't expect. It's not why I do the things that I do, but it's a reminder of, that we can have a really big impact on students, on people, when we make these connections, when we go out of our way to continue supporting students. And it was just really great to hear that, you know, because I never thought about the way that I, that I can sometimes impact people, that, that she shared that. The reason why she feels that she can continue to become a physician is because some of the advice I've given her and because I've helped show, demonstrate some of that pathway. And so I just shared this story because it really, you know, inspired me and, and really like refocused me and showed me that, you know, when we spend this time with students, we can really make a big impact that does leave a lasting impression on them. And I'm really grateful for the interactions I get to have with students and looking forward to continue to have more interactions with students. I just wanted to share that story with everyone.
Trustee Rocha?
Oh, as you know, I've already made a couple of visits to the schools and, but I, I wanted to call attention to this, which I was, it was fantastic. Mrs. Flores is the director in charge of the, actually, it was Folklorico Concert that was had at Antioch High, and they've had it in the past, but what was unique by this time is two pages here, say, two sides. These are all the dances that were held from the different states in Mexico. And it was beautiful to see all those skirts just flying around. And boys are hard to find. There's four boys in this group, but it's all girls of different ages. It was beautifully done, but the wonderful thing about it is that the clothing came because of the donation from Rotary and from PEL, the Police, Police League. And I, and the display on the, on the, the theater that night was done by one of the Rotary members. And I think, I forget his name, but I'm sure that you guys know him, because he's, Hetrick or?
Tom Hetrick.
Hetrick. Because he's the one that did it, and it was gorgeous display. And, you know, I'm so impressed, so impressed of how, God, what a wonderful job they did and how, how well these young people dance. And it, and they bring out their own culture. And, and it's not particularly just for one group of, of ethnic groups, it's for all the kids that want to participate. Anybody's welcome to do it. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and maybe you could see it in the spring. They were very quiet about inviting people because the fact of the COVID, you know, the, the virus issue, and so only families were invited, and that's why they didn't publicize it. But I was, I'm tickled to wait for, in, in the spring when it comes back again. And then the other day, I had a chance to go to the winter concert, I would have come, because of our meeting, I couldn't go to the next one. But the winter concert, they just hadn't, they're starting again, there's another one coming up, I think, before, I'm not sure if we're going to miss it, I think it's Friday, I'm not sure. But all the children, all students, you know, participated in their music, the percussion and the orchestra and the color guard and all that. So just wanted to share that.
Trustee Dr. Lewis?
And thank you for letting, for that update. I was actually supposed to attend that one. I'm literally on the way to Antioch High School and I get a call saying that Deer Valley was having a winter wonderland event.
Oh, yeah, it's hard.
It was, you know, I, I wish I could tear myself in two and sort of go both.
Yeah, no, it's hard.
But I did end up coming, it was beautiful. I mean, I was floored by some of the, some of the amazing singing and, and sort of performance by the students. And I think that, you know, they sort of limited the number of.
Oh, yeah, they're very careful right now.
But it was a beautiful event. And I think that events like this, as much as possible, we, listen, life is hard, and some of our students are facing some very tough times. And, you know, what I saw in that outlet, because I actually talked to some of the students leading up to the event, I'm sorry, not leading up to, but after the event, that event, preparing for that event, finding out that they could sing or participate in these activities, even if they weren't one of the people singing, maybe they did dress, whatever they did, those activities could be the, the, the thing or the sort of the, the push to inspire them to do whatever it is they want to do in life. So I want to make sure that we highlight those activities.
Yeah, so a couple of things. I, first off today, I went to, or I attended a professional development training, equity-minded leadership for school board members. And so I just encourage my colleagues, we do have professional development dollars, so if you haven't used any yet, there are so many good trainings out there. I was so, so, so impressed with this organization, Connect Ed. And I actually would like to see us potentially maybe look into having a full board training. I think that that would probably make sense for it to come after our own kind of more initial governance training. But I would, before the end of this year, like to see us, you know, do some more intentional equity training. And I found it just endlessly fascinating, it was people from all over the country, so that was helpful, too. I also attended Rocket Ship's Open House, and I know that I saw Trustee Hernandez and Trustee Dr. Lewis there. It was really wonderful, you know, just in this vein, speaking of, you know, how, trying to keep our school site safe, it was really nice, I think, for me, as a school board member, to get that personal invite, to know that it was going to be okay to go to the school. And it was just really wonderful to see all the kids and, and learn a little bit more about their school. wonderful to see all the kids and, and learn a little bit more about their school. Uh, and then I have also been attending, um, meetings that, uh, former mayor pro tem, now council member, uh, Wilson, uh, has organized with different county leaders, um, different city leaders, and working with the Antioch Youth Council, uh, developing some kind of climate actions. So that's been really interesting, um, and I'm excited to kind of continue, you know, again, just thinking about out and about and us, you know, kind of representing the district in a good way. It's one of the ways, you know, that I hope to do that, and just to kind of bring that perspective. Uh, and then, um, superintendent Anello had mentioned that, uh, um, city manager Ron Bernal is retiring, and so I'll be going to his, um, there's a celebration at the Antioch Community Center from four to six, um, so everybody's, you know, uh, welcome to attend that. And also, you know, I echo what everybody said, I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday season, and just remember COVID, we are still in a pandemic, the variants are out there. If you haven't, please get vaccinated, it's so wonderful to hear those, those vaccination numbers, there are so many resources through the school sites, so don't, there should be no reason that, um, you know, that, that there's a barrier to actually accessing the vaccine. So I, I highly encourage everybody, if you can, please get vaccinated, stay safe, wear your mask, um, you know, let's keep each other safe. Uh, and then trustee Dr. Lewis had something he wanted to add.
Um, so, you know, I, uh, as I said, I talked to trustee Hernandez, he and I, we talk a lot, not about board stuff, so there's no brown, brown egg violation, but we are developing sort of a genuine friendship, uh, and one of the things he, he constantly gets on my case about is saying, letting people know the things that I'm doing in the community. Uh, and in that effort, uh, I just would like to announce, I've been teaching at UC Berkeley at, uh, leadership and development course, uh, and in that course, at Gobert's, I actually graduated from one of the programs there, so, uh, I know there's a Stanford Cal thing going on up here, but, um, so, in that effort, uh, to highlight what we do here in AUSD, I use examples, obviously not names and all those things, I'm careful, but we use examples from, from what we do, uh, outside of our class and outside of work, to, to give students examples, because we're talking about leadership, because what Berkeley is realizing is, and, you know, sort of the, the goal of this class is, these top-tier universities were graduating 4.0 students who were very great at policy, but less great at human interaction. So a large part of what we're teaching is, how do you take that, that, that big brain, that, that, that bevy, that, that wealth of knowledge, and package it in a way that you can communicate with others and sort of feel that, that connection? So, that's that, and also, lastly, leadership, as I said, is hard, and I wanted to send, you know, I, this year's been tough, but I do want to thank you for sitting in that seat, I've sat in leadership, uh, in a number of different capacities, decision-making is not easy, and, you know, it, it's hard, it's not even, it's not easy, it's hard. So I just wanted to thank you for sitting in that seat, and thank you for your leadership for this year. We don't always agree, right? Approaches are different and all those things, but I just wanted to say publicly, you know, that it's, it's important that you sat in this seat, and thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, too, and I just...
Can I add to that?
Yeah, absolutely, trustee Rocha.
Madam Chair, I know that we've had some difficulties between us, but you know, I believe that that position is very honorable, and that position has to be respected, and so I thank you for taking all the heat and whatever happened this year, and hoping that the next year will be a better year for all of us, and thank you for your time.
Well, yeah, and I mean, I thank everybody, I know that we all haven't agreed, I know my approach has been quite intense sometimes, a little extra maybe even, but I do appreciate everybody sticking, um, sticking with it, and I'm just always so thankful that by the end of the meetings, we're not, you know, wanting to rip each other's heads off, even if we do disagree, and I think that folks maybe think that we, like, don't like each other, but I authentically, genuinely like every single one of you, and I feel like it has really been an honor, um, and especially seeing that we've been, I mean, most of these meetings have been virtual, and so, um, it was very, very difficult, I think, initially, and obviously lots of ups and downs, but I appreciate the whole, uh, uh, superintendent, cabinet and team, as well as trustee Dr. Lewis, um, and all the folks out there in the community who've reached out, um, to offer help, offer guidance, and folks who have, you know, uh, lended their voice to help me, whether or not that was a critique of me, whether or not that was in support of me or not, I, I genuinely care about every single public comment, and I take things to heart, so.
Yeah, I want to go ahead and jump on this praise bandwagon, and, uh, you know, thank you for, um, your time as board president, I think one thing that I'd like to say in particular, um, especially like regardless of what anyone thinks about president Householder, I think one thing that, uh, you know, I challenge anyone to fight against is that, um, I can't think of very many people who could take some of the heat and comments and, um, different, um, you know, comments that came, um, and make it through, I think, you know, regardless of what you think, it is something admirable, I think, um, and it's something that stresses me out to think about sometimes.
All right, well, thank you for that, I appreciate it, um, you know, I'll take the heat, it's okay. And so with that, our future meetings, we have January twenty-sixth, and we have February ninth, uh, very much looking forward to, um, both of y'all's, trustee Hack and, uh, trustee Hernandez, I'm looking forward to your leadership. And so with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting at ten eighteen PM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Dr. Lewis, seconded by trustee Rocha, Ms. Cavalero, can you call the role?
Trustee Hack?
Absolutely.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
Uh, the motion to adjourn the meeting passes five-zero, and if you could all stick around, I have a couple of things, including, um, Mr. Bernal's certificate for you guys to sign?
Thank you.